Will we convene to open session? No action was taken in post-session. You can please stand for the time to glass.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five, public comment. Public comment is 20 minutes. Please note the meeting is recorded and livestreamed at www.crtusd.org. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters not on the agenda at this time. Please state your name and address and keep your comments concise, brief, and limited to five minutes or less. A maximum of 20 minutes is allotted to each subject not appearing on the agenda and a maximum of 20 minutes is allotted at the beginning of the meeting. If there are more speakers than time allotted there, each offered the opportunity to speak for an equal duration up to 20 minutes. If a speaker desires to retain a full five minutes, they may speak during the second public comment portion of the meeting near the end of the agenda. The Brown Act restricts the Board from considering any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Members of the public are entitled to speak on any item on the agenda either immediately after the item is called by the Board President or following background information provided related to the item at the Board President's discretion. Each person is entitled to speak on any agenda item only once at any meeting. All of the Board members may seek additional information or participation in debate on any item before the Board, shall be limited to members of the Board. Please fill out a comment card which will be given to the Board President indicating the items he wishes to address. Comments are limited to five minutes per individual and 20 minutes per item. We have six speakers and with our 20 minutes, I can say it three minutes, three point two. Let's start with Common Core Math.
Yeah. Ruben Stein Glass, please.
Ruben Stein Glass, 9820 Bodega Highway, San Francisco, California. Being the Board members, I promise to be brief. There is an important basketball game going on right now. I'm here tonight to speak a little bit more about safety. It was alluded to at the last couple of meetings. I've been working on safety for the past close to two years now as a RIPSIA representative and I want to give you a little bit of history before I say where we are, where we would like to go here. When the fences immediately came down at Rancho Cattati High School, I expressed some concerns to the staff, brought those concerns to RIPSIA, and we attempted to have a safety meeting, a meeting with the district. We really had to fight to have that safety meeting. I'm not sure why it was so hard, but we had to resort to the contractual language to actually get the safety meeting. We did have a couple of safety meetings and we actually got that meeting where we had agreed to some concerns not only at Rancho Cattati High School, but also at some other sites. Some of those concerns were worked on at the other sites and the concerns at Rancho Cattati High School have not yet been alleviated. In particular, the problem with the perimeter, the lack thereof. We came proactive with solutions, in particular having some more eyes on the ground. We suggested cameras, other proactive solutions to resolving the issue of the fact that we don't, we no longer have a perimeter at Rancho Cattati High School. So that was, of course, last year. Also, we came up with solutions about during lockdown, having sanitation kits because we had had a lot of lockdown and we had kids who were, you know, using the garbage cans to the bathroom. And we also had, if you recall, an unfortunate incident where a kid was suspected of being a intruder. So we came up with these solutions, there were, nothing was resolved with those solutions. So fast forward to this year and we continue with those concerns and thankfully this year, you know, with, with our leadership, with Principal Carter, we managed to get a safety meeting at the end of March, I believe, and Dr. Haley came and expressed his concern for our concerns too. And thankfully we came up with some solutions. So I just want to reiterate what those solutions were and let the, let the Board know that I want you to be behind the solutions that we're working toward. So the four solutions that we're working for here are, when we came up with this, we worked as a team and I really felt that we made a team effort here and Dr. Haley brought the, brought the police officers too. And that was, that was a really important statement. More campus supervision. Second, our ninth and 10th graders, we'd like them back on campus. That's, that's what came up, what we came up with at the meeting. Those ninth and 10th graders are being influenced at the square and then when they come back, they're not in a good learning environment. They're coming back, you know, high on those energy dreams, et cetera. We'd like our ninth and 10th graders back on campus where that focus can come back to be on academics. Third, badges, okay? We need to know who are our students and who are not. This year, I've had personal interaction with expelled students. The story of the boy with the dog coming around campus, the pit bull, that was me, right? And then last, the south side of campus fenced, okay? We need to know where the dividing line is. We have students who are going up to that path, they're smoking cigarettes and other, other smokeables on that path. The skateboarding is coming on campus more, causing other issues with safety. The teachers in the E wings really have, you know, get this, understand this, so we deal with it on a daily basis. In the center of the campus, it does feel, feel more safe. You know, perhaps we, we are safe and I, and I'm glad that a lot of our students feel safe, but I don't think the feeling of safety is good enough. I think that we as adults really need to ensure that our campus is safe and that it is, it is the district's responsibility and us as teachers to ensure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dan Markin. I live at 930 Bender Avenue in Windsor, California. It came to us, I want to speak just in the general feeling of all the teachers of wanting to resolve the pay issue and, you know, get our appreciation for all the work that we do. I've been a teacher in this district for 30 years. I've been lucky enough for the last 13 to be a band music teacher and in that capacity, I've had the chance to, I think, a unique chance to interact with many, many teachers in the district and in my experience, thousands of students. When I stopped to count it up, it really reaches into the thousands. And I can recall in all of this, in interacting with many teachers, communicating with them about different students, their progress, that I really have never, the main focus has always been how do we do the best for our students, how do we help them develop? In all the history we've been through, I can't recall ever hearing much about, well, our pay isn't good enough, we're very discouraged about that. I think the discouragement sometimes would come from not feeling they have the adequate time and resources to really accomplish their goal. So that's something that has impressed me about all the teachers and I know every day that I go to work and try to make the job work, it's not a thought of, you know, what am I being paid even though it is important, but how do I get the job done? How do I do the best for these students? At this time of year, all of us want to know that we're, we've helped our students do the best of our ability to grow and to move ahead to a positive future. As teachers, we value the respect of the community and fair compensation salaries is part of this respect, we think. I will always be advocating for music education, our music and band program. There's extensive research that we can all find that shows all students involved in music show extended, you know, exceptional academic growth. So it's something that I always advocate to continue the resources for. If our economy's getting better and our prices are getting better, please remember that we keep developing the music program. An example I can give you is that over the last year, the district very generously and wisely invested $12,000 in middle school instruments for both Tech Middle and Lawrence Jones. They've also made a significant investment in the elementary program. Many of those instruments had been used for over 20 years. When you think of all the students that have been through the program, again, we're talking thousands of students that have been exposed, many of whom would never have a musical experience without the school bands and music program. I like to think of an example, you know, always budgeting is a concern, but one of the flutes we purchased, one example, it cost us basically $260. If a student had to walk into a store and buy that, it would cost around $600. So if we just do a little math here with, if that flute lasts at least six years and most of them last more, most of the instruments last could do more, that means we've only had to invest about $45 to $50 to give what I consider a life-changing experience to the students. So when I speak with many parents, often the parents will share that they were involved in band in middle school, elementary or high school. And usually the second statement they make is they wish they'd gone further. So I hope in our endeavors that we can continue to help the students and the teachers go further. Thank you.
Yvonne Colbert.
My name is Yvonne Colbert and I live at 5300 Farland Road, San Francisco, California. Good evening, Board members, and thank you for your service. Tonight, I'm not going to speak from the perspective of a parent, although I have been a parent of a student in this district. And although I have taught my 24-year career here in this district, I'm not going to speak from the perspective of a teacher. I thought I would share my experiences as a student of the Cattati Mon Park Unified School District. About 35 years ago, my parents decided to relocate to run apart from the Bay Area. I was in seventh grade at the time and I was devastated. As many of my colleagues will be absolutely surprised and some of you will not believe, I was horribly shy as a young girl. And the idea of going to a new school in the middle of seventh grade without knowing a soul was just horrifying to me and it would take me all year just to make a few friends. It was a camping trip that I remember most that my science teacher, Mr. Baldwin, had organized. It was overnight to the beach and we hiked out in the drizzle. He had loaned me a backpack because I didn't have one. And it was two classes who went out and then it proceeded to rain all night long. We were uncomfortable and miserable and soaking wet, but memories were made and friendships were formed and I made friends. Later, when I would go to Rancho Cattati High School, I was overwhelmed by the sheer size of the school and my few friends seemed to be lost in the hustle and bustle. And so once again, I went into my shell and I sat in the back of classrooms and I hid out and I didn't want anybody to notice me. It was a teacher who spoke here, Donna McKenna, at your last Board meeting about her passion for coaching, that would take some time to notice me. It was at the end of the semester of our jazzercise class. She told us that she had been watching a student and that this student had paid attention, got along well with the others, and was really devoted. And she said that I had won the award, which was the red Rancho Cattati sweatshirt. I was absolutely shocked. I couldn't believe that she had even noticed me. I mean, I was surrounded by these self-confident, beautiful girls who were on volleyball teams and soccer teams and she noticed me. That was amazing and I was so proud and my self-confidence took a huge leap that year. It's teachers like Mr. Bettencourt, my science teacher, who always stopped to chat with us about what was going on in our lives. He really loved teenagers and he loved his job. Mrs. Brown, my math teacher, could teach math to anyone. I was terrible at math, but I loved her. Each day she would start our class with, "What difficulties did you have with last night's homework?" And no question was too silly to ask. Everybody felt safe. And then she would proceed to clear the confusion and make things understandable to everybody. Not only did I learn from Mrs. Brown, but I needed to graduate from high school, I learned how to teach well. And I use many of her strategies today in my classroom. I just want to thank the teachers of this district and I want to thank you for supporting the teachers of Cattati Mon Park. Thank you.
Connie Colbert.
Good evening, my name's Connie Colbert and I live at 618 Roscourt, Sonoma, California. This is part two of my TK special speech. I'm thrilled that the district is going to offer two TKs next year, one on the year-round track and one on the traditional track. And based on my experience teaching the only TK this year, I have some suggestions for the next transitional kindergarten which is going forward. It's a different can of corn in terms of curriculum. You can't use, well, let me quote from the state guidelines, which I followed all year. "Learning experience should be meaningful and integrated across subject areas. Learning should also include experiential and hands-on activities in real context." That's the core curriculum for TK and that's what you need to apply for the TK teacher. And because the K classrooms use Hogen Mifflin, the TK teacher can't use it. So the main thing is language development and you really need to provide things to teach integrated language development. Once there are TKs on the same track eventually, my feeling is you should assess them all together and then even if there are different schools, balance the classrooms because if you have a very unbalanced classroom, it can be very difficult to teach and it can undermine the program where if you balance for gender and special needs and behavior issues, it just makes it a better year for everybody. Eventually, I would recommend offering a JK, a two-year program, not just a TK program because if someone's borderline and really not ready for regular K, even if they have a summer birthday or something, they can still take part in the two-year program. Also, if they come in as a five-year-old, they get ADA where the four-year-olds don't get ADA till they turn five. I think it'd be a good idea to commit to having the two-year program until the first TKs get to middle school so you can track their progress and see if it makes a difference because I really think it's going to. If you're going to set up a TK or a two-year program, have it run long enough to see the effect. Parents are really interested in this and I think you should, early in the year, communicate to parents that there will be one or two, even three, and get to the preschools, get to potential TK parents, and also reach out to other districts because it's pretty rare still to have a TK, to offer one. And it can be a draw, I really think it can. And even if they come just for the year or if they come and stay in this district, it's a good thing to get out there, parents aren't sure what it is. And the TK teachers really need release time and staff development and support in that area. So you, I wanted to go see a transitional kindergarten because I'd never seen one and there are workshops people can take, there's a consortium at SCO that's really good and I think teachers really need a chance to plan together and help each other and check in with other TK teachers. TK is going to be a great, a game changer for education, it really is. Wait till you see when there aren't full babies in the class and everyone's old enough to learn. Another district support will really help the teachers build not only a TK program but an excellent one. One that will help really redefine successful education for all the way up to the district, for the teachers, and especially for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Betsy Smith.
Good evening, Board. My name is Betsy Smith and I live at 4530 Makinata Drive in Santa Rosa. And I'm here to address the plan for us that we've been asking all year to think about these wonderful teachers that are in this room and the ones who weren't able to make it, including myself, who hasn't been able to come to Board meetings because I had to take another job in order to make ends meet. And I'm hoping with all the honoring of the teachers this month and the ads that are asking, the review ads asking to honor us, that you will really seriously think, and the good news from the state the last couple of days, that you will think about putting your money where your words are and make sure that you plan for us. Thank you.
Mahang Garghori.
Mahang Garghori, 1197 Cielo Circle in Rancho Park. Thank you, Board members, for your service to our community, the students, and the cities of Rancho Park and Cattati. Tonight, the members of RIPSIA are here to celebrate because the news out of Sacramento is positive. The Governor's budget, due to the Governor's budget, the district can now make good on their promises for raises for our members. Governor Brown has proposed to increase funding for schools by 6.1 billion with a B dollars. In addition, the state is repaying all deferrals, so cash flow problems for district should be alleviated. Not only that, the district will receive $183 per student for Common Core implementation. This is where we would like you to, like to urge you to use some discretion. Instead of approving proposals to pay for consultants and buy programs, Common Core money should be used, should be invested into training our teachers. One way that we can do this is to pay the per diem rate for training or substantially increase the hourly rate so that members feel valued when they come in after work or over the summer for training. There's no longer any doubt about the implementation of the local control funding formula and how that works and the likelihood of future funding. Over the past few years, our members have given up a lot by taking a 5.29% pay cut for three years and paying 15% for our benefits. But now those things are over and we are ready to celebrate the end of a successful school year and a budget that has room for raises for educators that have sacrificed so much for this district. We look forward to hearing from the, to hearing the district's proposal of bargaining this Friday and anticipate hearing good news from our bargaining team. Let's hope we can end this year with a celebration and start the 2015-16 school year with a note of optimism. Thank you.
Item seven, communications.
All right, well, item six, presentation, the recognition of 2015 district retirees. I'm going to do my thing first. Okay. So tonight's my pleasure as a Board President, along with the Board of Trustees, to honor 19 of our district employees in their retirement. We thank you for your continued dedication of service and ability to change people's lives for the better. This group of retirees has served an amazing total of 423 years.
On the board.
Yes. You have all helped to create and define what this district is for our students, staff, and community. We thank you for making it into the wonderful place it is today and we wish you all an enjoyable retirement. Thank you so much for being part of our team. I'm just going to read off first the retirees that are not able to be here tonight. So I'd like to thank Judy, and I'm probably going to mess up a lot of these names, but Judy Corindal, Diana McMcKinnon, Mary Thomas, Sally Regan, Debbie Zies, Karen Jose, Ray Anne, Bazi, Bazi, Galiyassen, Maureen Beck, Nancy Stipek, Jean Walters, Leroy Wayhall, John Bessler, Doreen Thompson, and Carol Light.
So good evening, Board members. I get the honor of thanking John for his many years of service. John started his educational career in 1977 as he substituted in this district. In 1980, he was hired, he was hired at HON for three weeks, three or two weeks, and then of course, the low man on the tug of war, he got booted over to Richard Gray where he served, but he was able to transfer back to HON in 2002 and was able to remain a HON Panther from, since then. John's served our district for 35 years. Some of the things that, when I've known John, he, he hasn't stopped. He's out getting businessmen to come and talk to the students about Business Day and advertisement and building plan. He has Sonoma State made connections to have him bring the Star Lab for our fourth-grade students. A former NFL football player, Eason Lanson, don't know him, come on formally. He came and talked to our students about education, the importance of dedicating your time in an appropriate way, making good choices. At the Buck Institute, our kids were going around swapping everything to find that our computer lab had the most germs. So he was dissecting owl pellets, taking his class to Sacramento, the Louvre. So all of those things that make learning real, John has continued to the very end, I mean, this week, he were out bringing people in to make, make a great education for our students. When students are in a spelling bee, when they're in a cooking contest, he goes to their sporting, sporting events. So he's really, even after your school hours, you're dedicating your time to your students. This year, he, along with a former fellow teacher, was nominated as a semifinalist for the Jack London Award for their Business Day. Very proud of that. He, in his retirement, he will get to enjoy his granddaughters. He'll be good to go to Disneyland, get to meet Princess, all of them.
My granddaughter.
He, he will, wants to volunteer as a docent at the Louvre as well as other nonprofits. So I would like to, on behalf of the district, say thank you for your years of service and the thousands of students that you've touched. the thousands of students that you've touched.
And now it's my turn. Connie, please come on up. I have the honor of thanking Connie for her 27 years of service to Cattati Leonard Park School District. And I often like to think, and I've told her this before, how many kids that are roaming out there, Leonard Park, Sonoma County, California, and that have sprung out throughout the world, that you have influenced them and taught them in some way or another. And I know that you spend a lot of your time trying to influence them with art and music and bringing this really rich educational experience to them. And in this past year, I got to experience your love of TK. And I say that, and it's wonderful because, you know, we think of education and K on. And every time Connie brings up what is best then for the TK students and her classroom, her babies, she likes to call them her babies, and she always has their best interest in mind. Something you may not know, Connie has even touched our family. Connie taught my own son when we were at Goldridge. And now we're off to Evergreen and Connie and I are back together again. And my son thought that was pretty funny. So on behalf of the district, I would love to thank you for all of your years of service. Thank you so much, Connie.
I get to see the view from over here. And I have the honor of talking about Dr. Lori Mason, who came to Cattati Leonard Park Unified... She came to Cattati Leonard Park Unified School District in July of 1999 to serve as principal of Mountain Shadows Middle School, which she did until the closure of the school in 2010. At that time, she was tasked as principal with opening a new combined school, formerly Creekside, as Lawrence E. Jones Middle School, where she serves through today. She handled the assignment of combining the schools by drawing on the skills and knowledge gained from her postgraduate work, which made the transition to the consolidated middle school as seamless as possible. Lori has had a number of adjunct duties over the years, serving on many district committees and has been a key member of the district's negotiating team since 2001. One of her strengths is the ability to build strong and effective teams through the practice of shared leadership. At Mountain Shadows Middle School, she was able to create and implement smaller communities where the teachers shared the same student cohort. She developed integrated disciplinary units to address content standards as well as communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity skills. Teachers were encouraged and supported to develop innovative instructional and assessment programs. An example was Writing to the Point, a monthly writing assessment English teachers created and implemented, which resulted in the school's API jumping to 64 points. Writing to the Point received the Sonoma State University Jack London Award of Excellence, the Sonoma County Office of Education Program of Excellence Award. The California School Board Association gold and fell and was instrumental in gaining California distinguished school recognition. When the school board voted to close Mountain Shadows Middle School, her facilitation, collaboration, and communication skills helped to create a successful transition for the district middle school community, and this was key. She was able to lead the staff, students, and parents through the closing to embrace a new beginning at the other middle school site. At the same time, she quickly connected with the other school staff, students, and parents to facilitate their closure as she merged the district into the... as she merged into the district single middle school. The newly consolidated school was renamed Lawrence E. Jones Middle School after a beloved Leonard Park public safety officer and school resource officer. Working closely with the newly consolidated staff, students, and parents, she brought everyone together and made Lawrence Jones Middle School a school that honors its namesake. Through leadership roles in both public education and the private sector and as a business owner, and a co-founder of a nonprofit organization where she teaches women construction skills, skills... She has built a broad knowledge base and gained a better understanding of the educational spectrum to better serve students of our district. She demonstrates lifelong learning and loves working with students by utilizing a positive outlook and a healthy dose of sense of humor. Her doctoral studies in organizational leadership deepen her work as an educational innovator, which enables her to guide various constituencies to find common ground in order to create and implement high-quality, innovative, and educational programs for students. So that's what I put together, and that was the formal part. I could take that long, maybe shorter than Ruben. No, I really, I greatly enjoyed being here. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to see everybody here tonight, a chance to honor retirees. When I came to the school district in spring of 2011, it was a tough time. And, you know, there were some issues with school closures, declining enrollment, and it was hard, and salary cuts and everything else. And there was some turnover in the school leadership team. We lost a number of principals and everything else, and Lori was one of the few that remained. She decided to stick around, and I got to know her pretty quickly, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for her and her years of service in this district and education in general. I kind of gauge people by not just what's in their head, but what's in their heart. And I absolutely know all she cares about in her heart is what's best for kids. And I wouldn't hesitate to put one of my own children in her care. And I can't say anything more, that's the highest praise I can give, so thank you very much.
This is not my speech. Somebody else. Kim Brigger. What? You stole my line. This is Kim Brigger, in case you don't know her. Kim is the one that I met her in the late 90s, and she convinced me to come to the district. But before I get to my thing, I think Amy Carter, you have a few choice cards for this room.
Well, they're very choice. All right. I know I'm the new kid on the block, but I wanted to insert myself quickly on both of my five retirees. Kim Brigger is a Rancho graduate who is a ferocious advocate for students. She has a laid-back, easy-breezy style, but when she sees a practice, policy, or action that offends her sense of fair play and equity, she turns into a mother bear. All right? She will fight for her students and has spent her years striving to influence the culture at the high school to be student-focused and nurturing. At times, there are students who have effectively burned their bridges across the system and made it very hard for the adults involved to give them the same understanding and grace as others. These students will always find the tough love of Kim Brigger as their best opportunity to be heard and encouraged. She has the soul of a nurturer coupled with the astute mind of a courtroom judge. She speaks the truth and leaves no quarter when she encounters adults who act without kindness and compassion towards a growing, learning child. I'm grateful to have her beside me.
So I'd just like to add a few words to what Amy said. Kim is many things. She's an educator, she's an advocate, she's a world traveler, she's a runner, and she's an awesome cook. Have you ever been to any of her dinners? She also is, if students may not know, an excellent forcewoman. And she is there, and most of all, a friend. So, like I said, I met Kim in the late 90s, and she encouraged me to apply to Cattati Leonard Park. And I am grateful for that because it's been a great 15 years, and in that, I get to work with Kim. Kim works tirelessly to help students grow personally and academically. She's a firm believer that the education is the great equalizer, and she makes sure that her students get that opportunity. Integrity, compassion, dedication, all mixed with a great sense of humor, positive attitude, and a positive outlook on life. During her 34 years in Cattati Leonard Park, Kim has been many things there. She's been a teacher. Pretty much, if you needed her to teach something, she'd do it. She relayed that one time, one year before, the day before school starts, the principal said, "No, how about English?" "Okay, fine." She's taught English, PE, journalism, you name it, she could do it. She's also is the cross-country and track-and-field coach. She was assistant principal, this is all at Rancho now. She also created the Peer Helping Program that Rancho had, that was just awesome. During the time, and then she became assistant principal, and at that time, she was also the district program coordinator for an inter-agency support convention and intervention program called Care Impact. And this is K-12, which had elementary counselors in the elementary schools and helped build safety nets for students. She also was director of student services here in the district and sprinkled amongst all that, she was counselor at Creekside Middle School, Mountain Shadows Middle School, and Rancho Cattati High School. But where I got to know her best was Mountain Shadows Assistant Principal. If you lived in Sonoma County in 1997, you probably heard a news story. It was about a bright, beautiful, well-liked 12-year-old girl who was raising herself, taking care of her mother and her younger sister. She was murdered, and her body was left next to the 101 Southbound Pedaluma Honor. Her name is Joseph, excuse me, Georgia Lee Moses. Kim knew Georgia and worked hard to try and create an inter-agency safety net for her. But it was not enough, and Georgia filled through the cracks in our system. Every day since then, Kim has vowed never again. You hear about her passion, her commitment, this is what drives her. Never again would she allow a student to fall through the cracks. Kim, thank you for your unwavering effort to help students to find their way in the world, and also some of the adults. Your dedication, commitment, and passion has touched thousands of lives. Thank you for leading with your heart.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. And there's people in this room who, I can't believe they're still talking to me after some of the voluntary things I have had them done, my 10-hour relays with no sleep. And I also want to thank my husband. Then I could never have done any of this without his support.
All right. Once again, I'm going to defer to an individual who's traveled more road with Sonoma than I, but I did want to say a few words. We're kidding ourselves if we believe that teachers, acting on their own and in isolation, can create and maintain classrooms of passionate learning. Teachers, for their own survival and self-care, must reach out to others, share questions and inquiry, and hold lively conversations about teaching and learning. To truly be great, teachers must find support and encouragement in one another. I know firsthand the value of mentors who ask critical questions, provoke learning, and interrogate reality while enriching relationships and sharing resources and reigniting and replenishing our passion and curiosity as teachers. There are countless numbers of students who have learned about literature, language, and human archetypes within Laurel's classroom. But what I value and cherish most about Laurel is the mentorship and guidance that she has offered her colleagues. Each teacher in my English team can attest to the power of Laurel's encouragement and kindness. Laurel brings to mind Emily Dickinson's poem, "Hope is the thing with feathers that perches in the soul and sings the tune without the words." Laurel has been a messenger of hope at Rancho Cattati High School, a dedicated believer in the power and ethical warrant of education. Her legacy vibrally exists in the hearts and souls of my teaching team, and her influence as one of our founding fathers will resonate in the halls of Rancho Cattati High for as long as our school educates and nurtures children.
I've been practicing my speech, and I've been lining my kids up at home with my husband. And today, my youngest was doing something, was taking notes. I got a 10. It is with pleasure that we are here tonight to honor Laurel Lyman, who serves the Cattati Leonard Park School District. In 1974, Laurel started working as a reading teacher at Rancho Cattati High School. Laurel has taught classes in reading intervention, honors British literature, contemporary literature, English IX, AP literature, IB English, and French, and that's just naming the classes that I know about. Over the course of these 41 years, Laurel has grown quite a bit. Rancho Cattati has watched her fall in love, get married, take a year off to travel and live in Israel. Her colleagues have seen her raise children, kick cancer's butt, and mourn the loss of her parents. Through it all, Laurel has taught with heart in class, and both students and colleagues have respected her every step of the way. As most teachers know, one of the rewards of teaching is hearing back from our students once they have graduated. Laurel's walls are literally covered with letters from graduates thanking her for all that she has done inspired them to become. Did you like my misuse of the word "literally"? Laurel has not only dedicated her time at Rancho to educate teenagers, but teachers as well. She started working with BITSA during its first year, and I just found out this weekend that that was with Jessica Holman, and has been a dedicated support provider for years. And for us lifers, Laurel can always be counted on to give curricular as well as emotional support. Laurel is a mentor, my mentor, a friend, my friend, and a role model, although she's known to share some pretty raunchy jokes. Racy, I meant racy. At the ranch, she is our Laurel center, our glue, our den mother. When we are stuck, we ask ourselves, what would Laurel do? Because we know that if we follow Laurel's lead, we will find success and happiness. Cattati Leonard Park Unified School District is a better place because of your many years of service, and we thank you for all that you have done for us and our community. Congratulations on your retirement. Go off and have some fun. Go Giants.
Just want to say that I came to Rancho hairy-mate, hairy-arm pit. For a chief hippie girl who insisted that all students call her Laurel. It's been quite a ride. I haven't called any place home like I've called Rancho Home for 40 years, who lives in a place for 40 years. So I've been very cavalier about all this, but I can see that I can't remain cavalier. Thank you so much.
Katati Mountain Park Unified School District Board of Trustees expresses their sincere appreciation to Morgan Nelson for her dedicated service as student board member.
Again, the Katati Mountain Park Unified School District Board of Trustees expresses their sincere appreciation to Richard Dunn for his dedicated service as a student board member.
We're getting out, we need to break. I'm in right.
Do you need a little session? Item seven, communications. Start with Richard Dunn.
This past month has consisted of the school year just kind of winding down, students working on final projects and applying for college board AP tests. On May 9th, our robotics team placed third in overall standings for the 2015 regional competition in Monterey. Also got an award for guts of glory, signifying their dedication to achieving their anticipated goals and working together to succeed. For about six months now, Matthews Wing and Emily King have collaborated with students in order to compete in California's National History Day. The weekend of May 8th was dedicated to presenting, narrating, and depicting historical events to judges from all across America, mostly in California. While none of our students placed in the finals, it was truly an honor to be recognized at the state level for their achievements. Last Friday, 42 students boarded a charter bus and went to Disneyland for the 2015 grad night. We arrived in Anaheim at 9:00 in the morning, where we stayed in the park until Saturday at 2:00 a.m. Everyone I talked to had an incredible time, and I know many of my friends are also looking forward to going to the district's grad party in only a few weeks. In terms of upcoming events, seniors are presenting their final projects at Lawrence B. Jones Middle School on May 28th, starting at 6:30 p.m. Greg Wafer and Scott McKean told me to invite everyone to come in, check everything out, see what students have invented this past year, ranging from health applications to business backpacks. The 3rd of June is the school awards ceremony, recognizing students for their community action, academia, and participation in sports. Thank you.
Morgan Nelson?
Last Tuesday was our annual Cougar Olympics began at Break with animal trivia and musical chairs. This is where each day at Break until this Thursday, the classes compete for spirit points and prizes donated from around the community. These spirit points are also going towards the spring semester spirit point competition, which is ending this week. And this Friday at lunch is our spirit point tail date. As of now, the spirit points, the seniors are in the lead, but anything could change with Cougar Olympics today, or tomorrow and Thursday. Today, varsity softball just beat Montgomery, actually, a few minutes ago, 10 to 3 in the NBLs, and they'll be moving on to play more in the NBL tournament. Congratulations to swimmer Eric Lane, who won first place in the 200 freestyle and 100 backstroke at the NBL championships on May 9th. Also, congratulations to Bridget Eager for winning second place in the 100 breaststroke. The spring athletic awards are tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. in the Rancho Gym. The spring academic awards ceremony is this Friday in the Rancho Gym in the morning. And the awards night for seniors only is on the 27th at Spreckles. ASB is selling Kisses Senior Goodbyagrams for $3, or two for $5, where you can write a personalized note for a senior and it will be delivered to their classroom this week with Hershey kisses, those are what the kisses are not for kisses. Class council elections were held today at lunch for each grade to choose their own president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary, and those will be announced tomorrow. Our new ASB class for next year has been chosen. Next Tuesday, the current class will meet with next year's class at a picnic and we will exchange commissioner finders and advice for next year's class. Our last blood drive of the year was on May 5th, and we received 39 donors and 41 life-saving units of blood. ASB is selling graduation laids delivered fresh from Hawaii for seniors on graduation day. Our blackout senior rally for the seniors was a success and prom the next day also went great. Tomorrow, Rancho's library is holding a dine and donate at Mount Mike's Pizza. So if you say you're with Rancho's library, you don't even need a flyer, you just go there also for delivery. They will donate 20% back to benefit Rancho's library. Last week was staff appreciation week, so we recognize all the hard work of faculty members on campus with individual letters, cookies, and other treats. Senior week this year is as follows. Monday is a regular schedule and yearbooks will be distributed to the seniors after school. Tuesday is also a regular schedule, but it's for yearbook signing for seniors. Wednesday is a minimum day schedule with a senior picnic at S. Park at 12:30. Thursday is also a minimum day schedule and graduation practice is at 12:30. And Friday, there's senior breakfast at the 4-H Center at 8:00 a.m., and then of course, graduation at 6:00, and the project grad party at 9:30 p.m. at Spreckles until the next morning. This is my last school board meeting, so I'd like to thank you guys. This was a great experience and I'll miss it. Thank you.
Item 7, C. Board member reports, is that what?
First of all, listen. So this is the time of the year that, at least it's fun for me and I'm sure for other board members, we get to celebrate the, everything that, you know, the staff does here, the teachers, the principals, and what they create with the kids. And so we go as board members and the first one, I mean, it's, we get the cream off of the sundae, you know, you got to do all the work and that, so we get to do that. So, first thing that, and so I, you know, many years of doing this, I still enjoy this and that's why we just did the Top 20 Dinner, thanks to Mark White and Nikki Buckleoni, who, I have to give her extra credit, she did all the cooking, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, they, in an effort to reduce costs, they brought that in-house and that, so it's really good.
Yeah, so that kind of, and the food was great, so, I mean, this is a public thank you to both of them, so there's new people stepping up, so, as we change the guard. And then two coming up, because of my crazy wife and all her ideas, we brought you grad, you know, it's a good cause and the reason we continue to do it is because not only to give you a great party, it's to save lives. So, it's an incredible amount of work. I've been working three days a week plus on the weekends to do that. And anybody on the June 3rd or 4th that has any time, I start early in the morning on the 3rd, and then I finish on Saturday morning, you know, so it's kind of like a military thing. And, not to admit that I'm getting older, but I need some strong bodies. So that's just what I have to say. Thanks to everyone in the district for doing all that you do to get the kids where they are.
I'm going to second what loves that, and for me, as a first-time board member, it's fun to get to go to all the May activities. I also went to the Top 20 Dinner. I've also spent time at Rancho doing the class visits, and I got to be a judge for the ASB senior projects one day. I've spent some time at Tech Middle, I went to a math class and a science class. I saw the plays at both Lawrence Jones, the Fractured Play. My kids thought that was amazing, it was very well done. And we also went and saw Mary Poppins at Hawn, which my kids loved as well, it was great, the singing, the directing, the kids were amazing. And I'm very jealous as an ever-in parent of your theater. I also, last week Jen and I went to Thomas Page Academy, and Theresa Peterson took us to every single classroom, which was great, we got to see the 5th grade state projects, we got to see the construction, and that was fun to go see all that. Oh, and I also made it to Montevista's open house. It's fun to go in the different classrooms and see what, compare the different schools and what the grade levels are doing. So I want to say thank you to the teachers who allowed me this year to be in your classes, to observe, to visit, to engage students in discussions, and I'm looking forward to more when school starts in July.
Two weeks ago, I was up in Sacramento for CSB's Legislative Committee, and it was really interesting, we have a student that serves on this committee, so we get to hear their point of view when we discuss the Senate Assembly bills, and the young man from Southern California, I have, I'm just so impressed with him because he really, he's not looking at it how it affects me now, but he's looking at it to how it's going to affect kids in the future. And that was really refreshing coming, hearing a student speak that way, especially when we're discussing bills. Last weekend, I was up in Sacramento again for delegate assembly. One of the projects that we worked on was what would our schools look like without financial or without regulations, restrictions, and discussing different ideas as to what the schools of the 21st century would look like. And a lot of the popular discussions, we broke up into 10 different groups, were schools that had completely different calendars, flex calendars, that worked well for staff, for students, and for families, and to allow more interaction with the students in the community as part of their education. I thought that was really interesting, and one person thought that if financially, if financial wasn't part of the equation, for every student to have an IEP, so every student can progress how they naturally would progress. Those that capture ideas can progress much faster, and those that don't, you know, need that little extra help can progress at their own pace. So, that was some really interesting ideas. And then yesterday, I got a tour of Thomas Page to see the exciting things that are going on over there. And it's going to be an amazing school site come opening up next year, it's really going to be beautiful.
Thank you. I just want to say, I did visit quite a few classrooms this past month, and I think I was over 50 or 60 for the year, so I saw a lot of great teaching going on, I just want to highlight some of that. I think I learned a few things. I was in Mrs. Baumann's 7th grade science class and they were teaching the health education module. That was a really interesting module for period, but I have to say that the kids were respectful and it was well taught, and hats off to her because I know we called something different when I took it, but it was an interesting class. I got to, I was invited to Miss Stogner's history class and with Trustee Farrell, and we got to hear questions. She opened it up and it was great answering students' questions about what's going on at Rancho, you know, mostly from a construction perspective, everyone's excited to see some of the things that are going to happen there. I did get to see Thomas Page, it's going to look beautiful this fall. I toured Rancho with Peter Costas, he's our SCO rep with the county board, and I have to tell you, the smile on his face was incredible when he saw the auto body shop and the ROP offerings we had when he walked into Cole Smith's operation and saw the teardrop trailers, it was, I think he really thought that we were doing what we were supposed to do here and had more offerings than, quite frankly, anyone else in Sonoma County. I think everyone went to the Top 20 Dinner, it was well put on, I want to thank everyone that did that. The Hawn play I was at, Mary Poppins, I'll tell you, those teachers put on a great show, I think there were four or five that spearheaded it. That night, I mean, there's always a kid that stands out, you know, there's a comical kid, and the kid that played the grandfather in this thing was just hysterical, so you need to find an outlet from the drama. And I'll pass after that.
So I as well got to go and with Trustee Farrell, we went up to Thomas Page and went to all the classrooms, checked to see what's going on with all of our construction, saw some great things, Theresa gave us a tour, met some of the construction people out there. I can't wait to see it when it's done, it's going to be great. Got to go see Mary Poppins also at Hawn, great play. Went to the teacher appreciation that the Education Foundation put on for the teachers, that was very nice, very well attended. Went to the end of the Top 20 Dinner after my PTA meeting and attended the Royal Park Chamber New Times Luncheon with Dr. Haley to keep in contact with all the city officials and business people and see what's going on. I think being our last meeting of the year, I want to thank all of our teachers because, you know, we know how hard you guys have been working, and we want them to know that we have been planning for you. we have been planning for you and we look forward to a great summer vacation and a great next year, so, thank you guys.
With that, we will go on to item 70, Chief Business Official Report. Item 1.
So this is a very busy time of year for school business people. We're hard at work, clean, pleading, the third annual report, which will come to you next week at Tuesday's meeting, at the same time that we're getting the information from the Governor's Budget Proposal. We'll talk about that later in the agenda. I do have one update on development of new housing in district boundaries. We have received the plans for the G parcel, as it is known in the city of Rudder Park, that is a parcel on Kesar Road that's adjacent to the district parcel that is for sale. City Ventures, who is our prospective buyer, also has adoption on that parcel, so they're moving both projects along in tandem, which is a good thing. So, we're glad to see them working on that and as things settle down from a fiscal reporting standpoint, I should have more time to spend with both cities, finding out what's going on with all the various projects in the area.
In, in relation to our property, where's the G parcel?
It is closer to Snyder.
Okay.
For the course property is?
On the other side of the garden.
The other side, yeah, correct.
Down on the corner.
Down on the corner.
The corner or the very other side.
In between.
Okay. The trailer is part of the website.
On the website.
Right, 70, Assistant Superintendent, Education Services.
So also on the website is the CEPA Annual Report, which describes sort of what CEPA hopes to achieve next year as determined with Superintendent's Council. And others, we've made it through testing and amazingly, and we had a great full day meeting starting yesterday. It was, we started in the morning with course planning, then learned about a new student information system we're looking at and then we brought together the group that was looking at the grading policy revisions and the group that's looking at the how-to-do grading online and reporting to parents online and met with the student information systems developers for, till about 6 o'clock last night. So it was a great question and answer and we were continuing to, you know, discuss and narrow down the questions we have in moving into the summer about how to build the grading books in the parent portal that we want to have parents see.
Item 8, Superintendent's Report.
Had the opportunity towards the end of last month to attend the National Center for Educational Research and Technology Conference. I've been a member of that organization for some time and to go to Trustee Gilardi's point, I don't know that we'll ever get to the point where money is no object, but being in a national organization with super tenants from other parts of the country where, you know, they're not 40th or 45th or 46th or whatever we're gonna rank going into next year in terms of funding, but, you know, where they routinely have $15,000, $16,000, $17,000 a student and they're simply shocked and amazed at what, you know, a district in California has to do with $7,000 per student or less that we've had during this great recession. It would be great if we were having, you know, a conversation about not just kinda getting back to where we were a long, long time ago, but where we really need to be and what we could do for students. But, on another side of that, you know, one of the themes of the last couple of years has been this conversation, and we've been having it here, which is the direction of curriculum and instructional materials where the state of California in the past has been a major player across the country and what we wanted tended to dictate what the publishers provided. And in the ink world, that makes some sense. Well, in a digital world, California's become a bit of a bit click. We're not at all what the major publishers are looking at. In fact, they're looking at other states that are much further along in terms of using digital curriculum and that's unfortunate. There's some barriers in the California market right now, really lack of clarity coming out of Sacramento and the Governor's Office and whereas I think overall this Governor's done a good job and, you know, we heard from him recently and was mentioned about this year's budget and I think he's made some good decisions. On the other hand, I think there's been a lot of focus on the funding formula and maybe not as much recently on curriculum and what we need for classrooms. Through this relationship, we've brought in some of the big players that are left in this market, Pearson, Renaissance, McGraw-Hill. I might've missed one there, Dr. Kaufman, but those would be, Discovery, excuse me, Renaissance and Discovery, anyway. And they've pretty much told us that they're just, they're not writing to California. Now, I can remember being in school a few years ago, many years ago, and we had Apple 2Es and started hearing about how things were gonna be replaced and we weren't gonna have textbooks and that's always been put off into the future, but we're really at that point. Even some of the textbooks that we've had in California where we haven't had a new adoption, we can't really go out and find replacements. They're not really common core, so I think we're finally at least in the transition phase and the requirements to have robust technology infrastructure, to have a computing device in the hands of students, especially at the upper grade levels, so they can access this digital curriculum. That's definitely something we're gonna need to keep looking at. I've been waiting to see, and Dr. Kaufman and I talk about it quite frequently and have different meetings, groups of teachers, inviting people in. I haven't really seen it rolled out yet in a way that makes complete sense to me, in a way that we can afford, we can sustain, and really is meaningful for students, but I think the time is getting close. Marketing, we will be looking at our marketing plans for next year. We heard the radio message mentioned earlier, this is a month that we honor school employees, we honor teachers, we honor support staff, and that's important to remember, the work that they do in classrooms. We talked about this a little bit, the radio ads are only one aspect of what we do in terms of marketing and really is intended just as much to reassure the people within our organization, within our school community, that you've made the right choice, that we're working hard together, that you don't have to go to another school district, you don't have to leave, you don't have to leave Rudder Park. And we have themes that we develop and the theme that we're looking at and developed a little bit this year, but want to, I think, emphasize a little bit more, just find the right ways to do it, which is really having pride in our school district and what we do and what we do for students here and we do a great job. And when we have somebody come and tour Rancho Todd High School and they're blown away by the class offerings that we have there, or they visit Technology High School and they see some of the really cool project-based learning that we're doing, or they visit some of our elementary schools and they see that we have libraries open and computer labs and smaller class sizes. Yes, we'd like them smaller, but these are great things and we have more students and more families staying here and we need to find the right way to be proud of that and that's, yeah, it's okay. I've also really enjoyed visiting schools this year. At times I've been able to do that with trustees and times they've been off and coordinated that with principals and done it on their own. Really enjoy being in the lunchrooms, just whether we've had formal setups or just informal setups, hearing what's going on in both formats is great. And then with that, I guess I'll reserve the rest of my remarks for other generals.
Item 8, Consent Agenda.
So this would be the consent agenda minus if I correctly G, L, M and N?
Yeah, so I get a motion to approve consent agenda, item A through F, H through K, O and E.
So moved.
Give me a second.
On second half?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion through. Item 8.
So I asked for G to be full and I have some questions on that. Removing our warehouse facilities from this facility and then food storage over to Martin Avenue. And one of the things on here is the architect's design for that and not to be cheap, but is there any other way to have a drafts person or somebody else to do that than to spend $50,000 for the architect to draw those plans? Kind of it is, I'd like to see all the bond money be directed towards, not to search change staff and their facilities, but all the, you know, as much of that bond money that can be directed towards schools or things that directly benefit students. I'm sure this benefits students in that way. I'm, you know, I've just hired an architect in Santa Rosa the last six months to do some internal fire department improvements, but how many square feet is that facility?
I don't have that with me. I'd have to look that up.
Okay. I don't know, is it 2,000 or 4,000? I mean, I guess.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, there's work that's being done there, there's work that's being done here as well. It's rather technical with the servers and the freezers and everything else that has to be cited.
So.
And then I would emphasize to your point, the move is necessitated by freeing up space for students in classrooms.
Right. I just didn't know if there's any other way that we had to pay the architect to do the design features versus hiring a drafts person or something.
Well, necessitates an architect.
And then what, do we know what the tenant improvements are gonna be? What those will cost at? Is there drawing up that for that 8,000? Do we have any idea still on that yet?
I believe the working budget is 500,000 and we intend it to be less than that.
Okay.
So that's part of the design.
Part of what we're gonna be moving to that facility is our food service storage facility and the state and federal government have very specific requirements about what that storage facility has to entail in terms of security and, you know, conditioned space so that it's not too humid, it's not damp, it's not cold. So it's probably more complex than you would think of when you just think maintenance facility. There's really more to it than that.
Okay.
And we don't, also aren't really able to have drawings provided by the landlord, so it's basically a shell and we have to do all the drawings.
I realize that, but you go into it using tenant pays for tenant improvements if you're gonna change it, other interests, you know, what's there?
And the timeline and part of the negotiations was extending that out, so the initial term is five years with an option for another five, so this is a facility that we can have in quite some time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I get a motion to approve item 8G.
Then we will ratify the agreement with WLC Architecture Design Services for the Martin Avenue Maintenance Facility.
Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Obey.
Item 8.
L and M, I have to abstain due to conflict of interest.
Can I get a motion to approve items? Can I move them all through?
Yeah, I think you could do L and M together.
Yeah.
Can I, okay, can I get a motion to approve 8L and M?
So moved.
I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Obey.
Item 8N.
So the question's about the cable agreement and then I found out information after that. The new cable agreement for Comcast on the agenda program shows a contract for five years of roughly $14,000 a month, so that's what caught my attention. Since then, I found out that we get E rate, which reduces this contract from about 14,000 down to 2,500 a month. Is that correct? Okay. So then my blood pressure came down. So, through that, you know, so in future contract, items like that, if we could reference the debt cost, then you won't get me excited so much, type of thing, and I understand that. So, and then just maybe a comparison of what we were paying with AT&amp;T and I don't know what we were paying from AT&amp;T a month. I looked on the warrants and I couldn't see, I couldn't determine. Is it close to 2,500?
E rate makes it very complicated because the E rate credits don't come through uniformly through the year. There's months where you pay a whole bill that might be $6,000 and then suddenly the E rate process comes through, the credits get approved and the carriers start applying them retroactively, so your bill goes to zero and you have a big credit sitting on your bill and you don't pay anything for a few months till you use up the credits. So it is really hard to remember what those numbers look like and I think right now we're in a time of year where we haven't been paying, so.
As a, as a follow-up, our special meeting dedicated for the most part for facilities next week, Executive Director Savage will be here. If we can give a brief update on the request for proposal process and a comparison as best we can, we could, we could work that.
So the three things I'd just like to see in, you know, in a proposal like that is, is a general fund or is it bond money? Kind of like what fund is paying for it and, you know, the net cost and then I won't have any questions. Probably some of that kind of stuff.
So I can tell you it is general fund money. Utilities, phone is considered a utility just like PG&E or anything else and understood a general fund as the funding place. The E rate program, the federal government, and it affects what the state is doing as well, is being restructured. So things that used to be eligible for E rate discounts such as regular phone service are, that's being phased out over the next four years. Other kinds of services, including Ethernet, is still funded, so it's, it's going to be a challenge to figure out how we budget properly over the next few years. E rate, I would say, is one of the more Byzantine formulas that we deal with and that's why most districts use outside consultants to help them with the E rate process, the RFP process. There are a lot of timelines that have to be followed and the forms from the government, the E 70 and the E 470 and E 471, I feel like every time I turn around, I'm being asked to sign another one and why? Why? Well, this is for this service and that's for a different service and it's, it's quite complex.
Are we confident that the E rate will continue out throughout the years? I mean, because if it were to drop off, there's gonna be a significant increase in cost to us.
So Ethernet will continue for some time, but if we were, some of our phone services, it's going away. E rate credits for websites are going away because the feds view is, well, you all have them now, so we don't have to give you an incentive to have them. You all have implemented that. So Congress is busy and they write new laws and the FCC is also busy and they might write new laws and the CPUC, the Utilities Commission also does. So I think the programs will continue to change, but there will be some form of funding because basically everyone who has personal telephone or cell phone service is paying a tax that goes to create the funds that then give discounts to schools.
We heard up at Sacramento, and I shared this with Rob yesterday, that they're encouraging schools that if you put in for the E rate once, you've gotten 100% of your funding to reapply because they're going to be full funding on the E rate proposals.
E rate actually requires you to project what you're going to spend three years from now. So if you want to get funding for a circuit, you have to apply now for the circuit that we might have in place from '16, '17. So as we are, that's been one of the big pushes as we've gone to our infrastructure work to make sure that we're requesting funding for big enough connections that might even be bigger than we put into place right now, but it's like, well, if we don't ask now, we certainly won't get it. If we ask and don't need it, it'll get reallocated to someone else. So it is a complex process.
Thank you.
I get a motion to approve item 8N.
Then we will ratify the agreement with Comcast Cable Communications for Ethernet, excuse me. Ethernet Network Services for five years beginning July 1, 2015.
Second half?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion through. Item 9, Summit, all in favor?
Hi, I'm here tonight to talk about the grading policy that's being discussed tonight and I have had teachers call me saying they wanna leave if grades get changed because they're so concerned about having these changes because they feel like they're being asked to do something that they don't agree with morally and this has been really contentious among lots of staffs and we've had meetings. contentious among lots of staffs, and we've had meetings, and that's why people said for me to invite board members to come to the meetings because it's, there's a lot of tension, we'll just say that. People are really upset. And the grading policy being discussed tonight is really disappointing to many teachers, and everyone here probably remembers teachers in their lives that helped them grow, and none of those teachers that we remember that helped us grow were the bar for us, or allowed us to do little or no work, or allowed us to ignore timelines and due dates. And most of us can probably agree that the teachers that challenged us the most, whether it was running the mile in PE, playing an instrument, tackling an essay or solving geometry, got the most from us and we learned the most from them. So really, that's why people that really love their jobs and really want kids to excel and do their best are so concerned about this new grading policy that's being discussed. And all of us can also agree that we learn the most from those teachers that expected a lot out of us and challenged us to reach into ourselves even more than we thought we were possible, thought we were doing things that we thought were impossible for us to do. And in my experience, kids love the satisfaction of earning a great grade when they study for a test or complete a project, and I would ask you not to take that away from kids by achieving their achievement by lowering the bar. There are kids that do earn poor grades, and when I ask them about it and talk to them about it, they always know why. I don't do my homework, I never study for my tests, I didn't complete my project, I read Sparkles instead of the novel, and so on. Kids usually know what the reason is for their grades and why they are not successful in school. And this proposed grading policy is a solution in search of a problem. Our educators and the tricentry grading systems and scales that they have developed over the years and that people in other school districts use all the time are not the problem. Giving kids passing grades when they cut class, miss assignments, or don't turn in their work and homework is just wrong and does nothing to prepare them for college, the military, or the workforce, where people don't accept excuses for not doing things on time, not getting your work done, not turning things in. None of us could get away with doing that job for very long. And school isn't always easy, and it shouldn't be because life isn't easy, and giving kids reasons to give up and not do their work should never be a part of any educational system. CRP USC needs to invest in more counselors and after-school tutoring to help students that are struggling, not lower our standards by implementing a grading policy that actually hurts the kids because it makes it okay not to complete assignments or turn in work on time, and that lowers the quality of the education in CRP USC for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma.
So the policy here tonight is for discussion, as was noted in my board item, it's been the product of a year-long or semester-long research and effort with the invitation of all district teachers to participate. It also, the board policy itself echoes the education code in that what we're asking for is an accurate evaluation of students' achievements. So we're not saying that we don't want students to achieve or don't want to know if they achieve, we are saying that we want to know what they can do. And quite frankly, that we're going to respond if they don't because the opportunity to opt out of learning is not something we can afford to allow our children to have. We don't want them to be disenfranchised because they score a zero on one assignment and a hundred on five others and they end up with eighty-three percent and get a D. So what we're trying to do is really focus on how we know what students know and are able to do, and once we know who can do an assignment, what do we do for them? And what, once we know who can't do an assignment, what do we do for them besides offering them a zero without an opportunity to repair? You'll see in the policy that there is an equal scale of four, three, two, one, zero. You can get an F, you can get a zero, you can get an empty. We have not changed our district policy in terms of those items. What we have asked is that at the local level, sites come up with plans for offering makeup opportunities for students and really look at how do we measure student achievement. There are many, many, many times students will miss something and not do well academically because they missed something and they're actually able to achieve, but there are often times when students are very compliant, they turn in their assignments, and they're functionally illiterate. They just get their homework done and it, you know, they get a D on the test and that homework grade gets them a C, and we promote them all through, and we have, quite frankly, a high school graduation rate that's reflective of that, and an early assessment pass rate that's also reflective of that. So we're trying to intervene as a system to say, we are going to do something if you don't know what to do, and if you won't do it, the consequence in life is to have to do it, not opt out of it, not get a zero, but actually be forced to learn it because that's the work habit we want to achieve. So that's kind of the genesis of the, the project that we've been engaged in over the course of the year. The administrative regulation simply deletes the percentage rankings, we continue to keep the four, three, two, one, which is what colleges use to score and rank students and also what we report on our transcripts. So we're simply saying that we don't want a zero to fifty percent mathematical calculation to influence how our students perform over time. We did take out the sentence, if not made up within two weeks after returning to school, the incomplete will be with an F, because again, that's not something I think we need to manage as a board or as an administrative team, I think that's something that needs to be handled at the site level, and it often depends on what the nature of the incomplete is. Similarly, teachers are encouraged, as always in the policy as it stands and as it stands, to allow for trends in student achievement. So we want to see students who gain in performance over time, and we want to support them as they grow over time. The students in grades six through twelve must earn a two-point-oh or higher is already addressed in board policy sixty-one forty-five, so we decided that we would just take that out because that way when sixty-one forty-five is revised and improved over time, we don't have to worry about making the connections between those two policies.
We use this type of grading system harder.
This is, I mean, it's, the difference is, this is our grading policy. What you see struck out is what's being struck out, which is the percentages, and mostly what's being driven is the zero to fifty percent ranking. And, you know, I guess, I think about one test that we all take to get into life called the driving test, and most of us who drive, some of us may not be great test takers, some of us may show up and not have studied, but many of us wouldn't drive if we only had one shot at it. And so like in life, I don't get a single evaluation and not go anywhere, I get many chances to hit my target, and I would say that my parallel parking didn't achieve the outcomes it should have, but over time-
I know, we know that we should, based on today, in other days restrict that to parallel.
I know. But now there are devices, I-
You know the lines are four. I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm just, I'm just so relieved to be there that I always just kind of drift over stuff. You know, coloring inside the lines is always, you know, I know, I mean, I just want to tell you.
On a, on a serious note, I want to address, so, so one of the big issues is, is the issue of an F and the percentage or the ranking of an F. We handed out the research from Hanover that was done several months ago, earlier in the year. I participated, participated in some of the discussions. What is in the counterargument, as somebody who did relatively well at graduate level statistics and enjoy applied mathematics and got to participate at the site level in these discussions a year ago? What's the counterargument? Is it to fail kids harder, not to be too tried, but what is it?
It's called aptitude. As opposed to aptitude, it's aptitude. You can go from a fifty percent F or you can go to to be thirty percent F, or you can get even a greater B, an F, it is zero. I mean, not-
Right, the F is still an F, it's not changing the F, it's changing the mathematical weighting of the F. If a student takes ten assignments and fails all of them, they still have an F, right? It's not where they magically gone up. If they have five homework assignments, five class assignments, and five tests and flunked them all, they've still got an F. So I guess, honestly, what's sitting at the group with different teachers and somebody advocating to maintain the zero, what is their mathematical argument? I really want to know.
There is an mathematical argument-
Is there something I can talk to that's-
It's a perception of lowered standards, which, again, when you look at, at what, what we're saying, you can earn a zero by not trying, you know, but, but we don't want to give you a zero that is an, is an over-
Well, a zero on a hundred-point scale is, is different than zero on a four-point scale, it's still zero.
So what we've done is made it essentially equal intervals, and by taking off the percentages, the question is, do you, you know, do, what does an A, if you're looking at calculating, what does an A count in percentages? And that's where our big discussion has been, no, what we really, we don't want to have percent correct, we want to have mastery. So that's been, and we go back and forth a lot about, well, can I have a four-point scale, and can I go out of it and make a percentage conversion? Of course you can, you know, it's, but, but, you know, is that what we want to do? Do we want to have a parallel in our grade book, a parallel percentage comparison? No, because then that puts A, a hundred percent as your A range, and that's not what we want. So what we're saying is we want to know whether or not the kids meet the standards, and if they don't, we want to do something about it. And if they choose not to, it's a different treatment than if they can't. So that's, you know, and then it's the question of time and resources, and how do you, how do you get that done? Where do we respond at the system, which, you know, there, there are many, then, layers of how do we, what different treatments do you offer? And, you know, it's, it's, obviously, we don't want to lower our standards, I don't think anything in here is saying we want to lower our standards, I actually think that by focusing on what mastery of standards is, we're holding ourselves to standards rather than allowing compliant behaviors to influence how we see students, you know? Some people would say you should include homework in your grading. We haven't gone there, you know, there are certain things that we haven't discussed, and I do have to say, this whole conversation was triggered around the allocation of final exam grades at the high school by delivery of canned food, and-
A chittering.
When I started that conversation, people warned me about my career, but, you know, when I heard that you could deliver fifty pounds of canned food and get rid of your finals, I began to think that I needed, I had a moral responsibility to have this conversation. And so for me, in a system where the standards have already allowed kids to miss their final exam, I can't be the assistant superintendent and not have this conversation, so.
So is another part of this issue, if I'm hearing from other points of view, the ability to change an incomplete or missed assignment by demonstrating you have that knowledge, is that?
Yes, within a certain window of time, and that's the other piece, that, that, you know, it's not, you don't get to push it till the eleventh hour on files, it may be within the course of a week, so that's what the conversations at the sites have been, have been, at a department level, when do we agree that a child doesn't get an opportunity to make up? You know, when do we agree that you don't get to retest? I'm not mandating that, I think that really has to come from what your local resources and time are.
Well, and, and I guess it does relate to the severity of the implication or consequence. If you miss the deadline on something and it's a mathematical zero on a hundred-point scale, it's very, very different than that same zero on the four-point scale.
Correct. And the learning objective is that you learn from, you, you continue to learn how the consequence that can, you can rectify rather than a consequence that one zero out of sixth grades, when the others are a hundred percent, puts you at eighty-three percent of efficient when you're performing well above average in all of those areas. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a philosophy in essence. I don't, I wouldn't be here saying to lower our standards. I have been very, very concerned with the lack of proficiency on our EAP, and I've been very frank about that.
Do you know the, the one-minute version of what the EAP is?
Their early assessment program is a test that used to be part of the CST, now it's part of ASBAD, that tells us what percentage of our students are ready for college and career in the eleventh grade. So they're predicted to be able to enroll in a post-secondary either vocational program, community college, or four-year university without having to take a remedial class. And we have some data, and I know the high schools have been talking about it, but for us as a whole system, you know, if, if we have students who, we give the benefit of doubt in grading because they turn in their homework and they raise their hand all the time and we like them, and they end up not doing well, I mean, they, they end up doing well in class, they get a gentleman C, as we used to call it when I was in high school, then they're not going to the world any more prepared than our kids who are total slackers and who can set up and get a double eight hundreds on the SATs, and quite frankly, they don't meet us anyway, you know? So it's a matter of what do we do for the kids in between that we can support and help as they go along.
So I know, over the years, I've heard a lot of different grading proposals and what have you. My main concern is something that, that you mentioned is, is these kids that, that do fall in that crack, you know? Are we going to be identifying more of those, and do we have a plan for intervention for them?
Yes, so we, we are identifying more, and we definitely, at the elementary level, we're doing that walk-to-read and hopefully some, some level of systematic math intervention. Right now, we have Dreambox and some supplemental tools, but we need a more systematic program. At the middle school level, we've got language exclamation for reading, and, you know, we're looking again, middle and high school, saying we've got language exclamation for some systematic support for, for kids, but it's things like, how do you use freshman seminar? You know, what's the eighth, ninth grade transition? We know that we lose students at eighth, ninth grade frequently, so what does that look like? What do you do in middle school to prepare kids for high school? What, what do you do if a child, if you only have algebra A and B, and A is first semester and B is second semester, but the kid fails, they look at first semester algebra and they have to enroll in second semester algebra even though they're not ready to because that's all we've got in our master schedule? So it's, it's really looking structurally at things, it's, to me, we should be having some type of a during the day intervention time where, again, I mean, you don't even get me started because I think we should have a seven-period day, because if I'm a six-period kid and I need DLE and I need regular English and I need math and I need math support and I need a PE, and then I need study skills or something else, I don't get an L if I want in a six-period day. So there's a lot of, it's a big structural issue, we're not alone, this is not a conversation that's unique to us, and, you know, with that, it, this disruption, to me, you know, what do I like? I like to disrupt practices, I like to say, let's look at what we're doing differently. And when I heard about the, what I consider to be very disruptive final exam for food policy, I decided, I will go ahead and disrupt this. And to me, the, the benefits being conversations and discourse and disagreement and messiness, and so I think this policy creates that disruption without mandating to the letter of, well, you didn't turn your assignment in, so you're going to get slumped, versus, here's your situation, you got mononucleosis, you came back, you're so overwhelmed, you're not feeling really well, it's not really an incomplete anymore, but, you know, you missed assignments, let us help you catch up.
And how is this, because whenever we do a change like this, usually the parents are like, what is this? So how are we going to be communicating with them and how this is, so, so they can better understand it?
Well, for them, it looks very similar to what, you know, what they've always seen, the A, B, C, D, F, and four, three, two, one, because that's on your transcripts, it's your grade point average, not your percent average. So the other piece is, again, those department agreements on your syllabus, what, how are we calculating what your grade is over time, and what is the departmental policy for makeup work? And, you know, when do you, when do you lose that opportunity to make up work? So that's all going to be part of course camp books or syllabi, you know, school-level policies, and that's what, that's what, especially at the middle school level, that's a good discussion we've been in the last couple of weeks.
And quite frankly, that, that's already being done in some places, and I can tell you there's some Rancho teachers that already are doing that, and I can tell you for sure that in expeditionary learning, that is absolutely being done and has been since the beginning, but then their grade scale is a lot different than this one, it's A, B, F. So, you know, you could get a C in Excel and it's an F. And, but there's opportunity to make the work up and to, just as you're describing. And so are those, the teachers that, that have already implemented that- And, um, so are those, the teachers that, that have already implemented this, have they been vocal in the groups that you've had discussing this? And what's the reaction from them?
Well, they're noticing, and you know, I don't want to speak for them, but they're noticing a change in their own practice and perception of what they, what they see about their learners and also how their learners respond. I mean, one of the big pieces, their statistics, their correlational, not causal, but you increase success rates, you increase student engagement, you lower discipline problems, you build a sense of culture and community where students feel that there is, as we heard from the quote on moral tonight, hope. And, uh, that's a powerful motivator that if I blew it, I had a bad night, I broke up with my boyfriend, my parents were in a fight, whatever, and I didn't bring it for the test or I didn't get it done. And then I can go back and make up that missed moment of my life and show that I can do it. It, it helps kids for the future. So, you know, I think that people who are trying that are seeing it. And, um, you know, these are people who, you know, we've had very heated discussions openly about whether or not we're dropping our standards and what does college want from our kids? And what does life want from our kids? And, you know, are we, are we really preparing them? And it comes down to the term mastery. How do we know they learned what we taught them? Which is where a systematic assessment system has to be part and parcel of the work we're doing.
So, so as I was looking at this, the question I had, and I, I agree with that type of platform, but what it entails is extra stuff. I mean, you have to have verifications, you have to have syllabi, you have to have a lot of things that currently may not exist, which take time to, to put together. You know, one of these, you know, it says in regard to unexcused absences, the teachers inform the class and parents at the beginning that you might fail for unexcused absences. And so what that tells me is, you know, the parent has to know through, you know, confirmation of receipt of the syllabus, that that is part of the grade. Otherwise it's not usable. So you can, if you, it's sort of like that, you know, you, you have to maintain some sort of record of this stuff. And I, I just, I see that as a, you know, as you get into all these things, that puts, that's a burden, you know? Honestly, I could, I mean, it's, it's sort of like if you're dealing with HR on the job, you know? You know, you have to dot your i's across your t's, you know? It's the same thing here.
And it can go into the student code conduct, you know? I mean, every, every year, the principals put out and provide to families the student handbook. So it can be there. And, but again, then that would be more of a mandate, which we say, okay, you have two weeks to make up assignments or whatever, you know? We, and part of the conversation we've had about in, in that grading group is let's get through this year because we don't know what the optimal circumstances are. We want to go into 15, 16 and figure it out and then maybe standardize it. But the other piece is collaboration time and that's part of, you know, we want, we want people to be sitting down and saying, gosh, I'm not engaging this kid. What are you doing? How, how is it working?
And I get it. I mean, mastery is very important. It's, it's so important that I have a 50 pound bag of rice sitting in my garage. So ask my daughter about that.
Are you making it, what?
I had enough rice. That rice is now in little gallon zip locks. And you know how many gallon zip locks I have? So I, 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 I get it. I don't like that either. Um, I think it's important to show that you've mastered or shown proficiency at least
Yeah, exactly.
in a, in a topic. And, you know, I, I get why that might get your angst up. Got mine.
I'm kind of responsible for the outcomes of the kids who can and the kids who won't. And they're different. And when you're looking at grades, it's hard to tell who can and who won't.
And then what I, what I've, what I've liked about it, and it's hard because, you know, in Excel, you know, there are huge projects that are done by groups of kids. And I, there's an astronomy project as part of one of the, um, learnings where some of these groups do this presentation four, five, six times to get into the A, B ranch. And the, the teachers allow them the latitude to do that because it shows them, it shows what they have to do to succeed in their learning. I think it's important to do that in middle school and high school because in college, this is, I mean, a lot of professors in high school do grade on a curve. And so that 56% in your third year, you know, calculus course.
And it's not about work completion. It's about how you do on your test at the end of the day.
That might be an A, believe it or not, or O camp. I mean, talk about the words, right?
Elizabeth Martin, excuse me, Martin just brought up an interesting point of Excel's got their system. Will they have to apply to this?
They already have it, basically. I mean, they're A, B and then F and they keep giving kids opportunities. So we're not changing anything other than, than the percentage ranking, you know? So you can still be in Excel and get A, B and an F and no C, D. It's just they're only offering three points or four points in their program or no points, but they're offering the opportunity to make up assignments. I mean, I think that
I think it's worth the discussion that, that team's coming together this year. I think they've done a good job and, and I think with site leadership, at least having that discussion about the efficacy of the A, B, F and having, you know, on the other end, receive some of those students where you're looking at certain CST scores or other things where they're in the advanced range and then they might have an F on the report card and getting some understanding of why that's taking place. I, I'm not saying we have to change it, but I think it's at least we're including in the conversation.
But what I see with my own kids through that program is it, it sort of gives, it's sort of a backs-to-life discussion, you know? You know, it doesn't count in middle school. You could get an F and it doesn't, you know, but it gives you an opportunity. If you've had all those opportunities to fix that F and you don't.
No, yeah.
And so that's sort of, you know, you know, the thing about it. I don't, you know, it's, I, do we have student perspective at the high school?
Yeah.
I mean, we have our new school board trustee here right now.
It's a little viral. I think the kids, the kids got a hold of there's no zero and it's like, no, 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 no. That's not what, that's not the intent, you know? So there are student perspectives, you know?
I, I've had lots of discussions, David.
Because I know my students, there are students that are offended if they can bring in a bag of rice and get an A, you know? So, but some students take advantage as well.
Well, and the flip side, you know, it goes, I was thinking what you were saying about the middle school level. One of the biggest things we have at the middle school is the social promotion of kids. And, and, okay, so you don't do your work, you, you know, you're not going to walk, but you're going to go to high school anyway. And that's been a conversation we've been having in the middle and high school because there's a lot of middle school and high school teachers in those groups of what do you, you know, what do we do to make it count in middle school so that we're not teaching them? Yeah, all right, you got another due over, you know? What's the gradual release of responsibility? And how do you make sure that entering freshmen are prepared with, you got to get it done?
That, that, two quick comments?
Yeah.
So your triggering event was the food program and that, that's fine. My triggering event in engaging in this conversation was really at the middle school level and looking with a principal at a number of students in a grade level who were flunking. And let's say, as I recall, it was about 40%. And this principal wanting some kind of intervention in after-school program. Okay, great, as a district, we've done that, we believe in it, we set measure D money aside for it. But let's look at, okay, what students would be in there and why? Because if you're just setting up a generic program and you've got different categories of students and I can look with that principal and see that a number of these students with Fs scored advanced or proficient in the prior year's CSTs, now S facts, what we might do for them in an intervention program would be very different than perhaps a student who's an English language learner or a student who's reading well below grade level and trying or a student who's simply not compliant. So there's lots of different categories. And I'm not a fan of just compliance-based grading because I do think that we have a number of students in our system that can score very well, have learned the material and simply don't want to comply with an overdose of homework and assignments that they see as busy work. And yes, they can demonstrate, they learned it.
We see that in our labs too.
And I'll nail it. So then my other comment, uh, and then I'll defer, I think that would be all the comments I have would be, on page 10, you have a section under pass/fail grading. And I'm, I'm guessing that's a carryover from before, which is students shall be graded pass/fail for classes in which they serve as a student aid, dot, dot, dot. Is that current or is that?
It's current. It's actually a revision of a prior policy. This policy's been revised before I came on board and then revised again in August of 2012. And that was one that felt Stefan wanted to have a little bit more teeth in the student aid.
I'd, I'd like to hear from, I'm not as concerned about the middle school level. I have some recent personal experience about that and getting an A. Uh, I'm not at the middle school currently, but I just have some. It is, um, it's a TA. But I would certainly like to see this enforced at the high school level. That if you're going to TA, that's great. And I think that can be a wonderful thing. But in terms of grade inflation, I, I would like to see if you're going to get an A for TA, that you've set some goals, that you've achieved those goals, that you've written a report, that you've done something more than just show up and deliver notes and count things. And that's great. I'm not against it, but I, I really support this and I'd like to see what principal staff and a coordinator.
Big boss down for it.
All right. Then I'll defer. I'm done.
So a couple of questions. It's, you know, it kind of boils back to speaker tonight that was talking about in her dance class, when her teacher, you know, acknowledged her. And that's kind of when the light switch goes on. And, and I have three boys and those light switches, we kept pushing that light switch up and they kept turning on the light switch. You know, like you say, being the bag of rice. Whatever grading system you have, if you don't go back and build the value of learning, kids are going to figure out a way to skate through the system. And I can remember at the JC level, when I was at the junior college level, College of Ren, you know, and I was working almost full-time as a grocery clerk and didn't want to lose weight with my parents, so I paid part of my rent. So there was the pass/fail thing. And I can say, okay, those are the classes that aren't my major, but I can take pass/fail. I can tell you that I did enough to pass. I didn't learn anything. So that's the scary part, you know? You know, so I go to summer school to make up some classes and I'm just doing it to get out of high school. But the real lesson here is how do we get kids, other than their parents beating on them?
We don't encourage that.
No, no, no. I said, I mean, beating the value of, of education into them. And then, I mean, that light, luckily that light went on for all three of my kids in college and we stood back and, and they did well, you know? And, and so I don't know what, I mean.
We think this does it because it puts the, it puts the ownership of the learning in the kid's hands in essence, you know? You don't, you have a clear deadline to finish your work. You didn't do it, oh, well, you know? But it's not going to slay you for your career. And on the flip side, you know what? It incentivizes trying. If you did fail, it incentivizes trying to make it up versus you have to sit through a semester waiting to try to recoup your grade or get to summer school and make it up for a C and then average it. And, you know, there's other, still other, as you said, there's still other ways around. You can retake the class and pick the higher grade and, you know, all those other.
But just, you know, in life, you don't get to do it three times, you know? You get once, if I come in and mess up at work or, or I don't show up and that kind of stuff, you know, I go on type of thing. And when you get to college, you don't get three, well, I guess you could take the class over three times. But at certain, you know, certain universities and stuff, you drop below a certain grade point, you're out of it. They don't give you a second or third time to go back and try to do that. So, so the question is where, where do we have that teaching?
Yeah.
So where do we teach that, that, that to our students? Do we do it while they're with us? Or do we wait for them, you know, to, or, or not, you know? And how do we do it? Because, you know, we know that in college, you know, homework is, is mostly a, a misnomer. You got to prove your, uh,
Definitely.
demonstrate that you understand the, the class, either if it's an essay final or writing papers or, or taking the final or taking a midterm, they're mostly, you're being tested on what you learned. They don't, you know, math class, you're not going to be turning in your homework. You're going to have the instructor demonstrate, you know, how to do that work. So, you know, it's a lot different here. You know, we're giving a lot of, putting a lot of emphasis on homework and we're allowing students to make up that, you know, here potentially make up that work. Where in, you know, in college, homework is, it really, you're on your own. You, you, you turn in the assignments that you believe to, you know, turn in pursuant to the core syllabus and that's your grade. There's no extrajudicial, homework doesn't count for 50% of the grade in college, where it might in high school already.
Has this been modeled as others?
There's a, I mean.
Oh, this is nationwide. The, the mathematics of this is nationwide.
And I included two articles.
The grading system, why, just as like, how do we, how do we turn those light switches on?
Well, I, I want to, as a teacher, I had a system probably very similar to the Excel system. And, um, so that, that motivation, that turning on the light bulb. So it's first semester, it's September, and I'm having a horrible month. My home life is a little bit like was mentioned perhaps earlier. I don't have a safe place to do homework. I'm not turning it in. I'm worried about what's going on with my family. I don't do very well on the first test or two in September. And let's say over the course of this first semester, there's going to be a thousand points available. And by the end of September, I'm at 50. What's my motivation to even continue? I'm a relatively smart kid. I can do the math of how many points are left available to me for the rest of the semester. And, and I have to nail all of them to just pass. I can now check up. I don't want to learn. I don't want to put forth max effort to be at perfection to just get to a D. I'd like to see that same student be able to turn it around. It doesn't change the fact they had a bad month. It doesn't change the fact that those scores exist, be it very low or be it zeros. But it gives them some hope, I heard that mentioned, that if they demonstrate proficiency and they get some level of caught up in this, that they're going to have more than just barely getting a D. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, and it gives, I mean, grading, when it's used as feedback, helps improve your form, performance. You know, I mean, not, you know, grades, like you get a zero, it's because your assignment was missing or incomplete or you failed it, you know? Not, you got a zero and there's no more, you know? So you can remedy it here or you can remedy it here, but, or you can choose not to remedy it and take that up, you know? But it's not a one and done for kids. And, you know, again, looking at a standard-based metrics, here's what I need to do. If I did fail, what can I do to learn it? It's not, you know, it's a, it's not that you never can master this, you know? I think we've learned a lot about neuroplasticity in brains over the years. And it's not that intellect is finite and that you're either a math kid or you aren't a math kid. Yes, there are stronger aptitudes than others, but we want to tell our kids that, yeah, algebra might be hard for you and it's not a death sentence for you if you don't get it the first time around. But we do need to give you some other way in a different modality and give you more practice. And we've seen that over and over again with the FLEX program and the use of AVENTA for kids who, you know, they were in algebra for their third year. And it's like, oh, wait, I actually knew this part and I knew this part and I knew this part. But I didn't know that part and that was holding me up. So now I'm learning that part, you know? And it's not, I got a zero and I couldn't ever get caught up. So.
Part of me says, you know, this is good. And part of me says, that, you know, if you dig that hole and you get yourself in it, if I don't say, you know, you're going to learn to get yourself out of that. And until you've had that experience and dug yourself out of that hole, scratched for, you know, I really lose just to get a C in the class because you don't want to get an F. I mean, that's the valuable lesson that, that people have to, I think, learn. I mean, one of the things that, that I, on this board that I always hated is the fact that we have five or six valedictorians at the high school or that at Tech High, I think there should be one. But that's just my values. When I played sports through, you know, elementary and high school, we all didn't get trophies. You know, and, you know, so, I mean, maybe life's changing, but I'm kind of the old school, you really have to work for it type of thing. And that's how I kind of have raised my kids and that's how I set my expectation. I'm just afraid of, you know, too many tries.
As a reminder, the, the issue with Ranch Pottery High School, that was removed and resolved.
The valedictorian thing.
The valedictorian issue, so that's.
Can we have one now?
Yeah. And what we've said to both high schools is that's a site-level decision. You need publisher, publisher criteria and yeah, this rounded. You need to publish your criteria and, yeah, this rounding, you did point one five.
No, I, but they still have multiple, I think. I don't think they're even going to have one this year. I mean, when you have a track race, there's one winner. When you have a football game, there's one winner.
I, I can check in.
Anyways, I mean, that's a whole different argument. So, I just want to do.
On your metaphor, which I think is a really good one of the whole, and I used to use, because I also taught in a positive attendance, positive, whatever, retirement cap was. And, and one of the metaphors I would use with those students is, okay, you, you've dug this credit hole, you're down in this hole. So, you've got to work, you know, fill in this hole here in the same amount of time and then start progressing up here that other people are already up here. So, the question is how, how deep do we want to make that hole for a kid? You know, and, and what's the prospects for them getting out? In terms of rigor, in terms of learning, everything that we've done here, I think, would, would be increasing that, looking at what we've done with our positive attendance accounting schools, be it Phoenix or be it El Camino, has been to increase the rigor.
Well, I think it's in some of it too, we hate to see a kid lose the whole year. They screwed up somewhere along the way, let's try to get them back on track sooner instead of saying, wow, you have to be a sophomore again because you threw it. It's.
And I think we're talking two different kinds of kids too, because there's those ones that have those life happens type of things where it's, you know, and I know that happened with my son. He, on his testing day, he came to school, he had been up since one o'clock till morning delivering playoffs. It was, that was something he had to do, that was his responsibility. He wanted to go to school because he had a test that day. Well, he failed the test. He had no sleep, you know? And in situation, it, there, there needs to be flexibility because there's kids that do need help that don't, that aren't engaged. And then there's incidences where it happens that something happens and it's like, it's not the kid's fault, you know?
Well, and we're not mandating here how often, we're only mandating, we're providing a grading scale. We're not saying what happens for final exam or what happens for, you know, how many times you get to make up a test. We're saying we believe that students who can and will try should have the opportunity to make up. We're not saying you have to give a child this final exam again. You know, we haven't gotten that far in the least because that's something we think that our educators can provide as context for where is the natural consequence. The other thing we talked about is really saying we also want to add in, and it's, you know, it's already in the policy, so we haven't talked about it much, but add in that effort component, like, you know, even at high school, your child's not trying and the grades reflect that lack of effort, not a, you know, not a lack of capacity. But again, the kid who's not going to turn in the assignment is going to get the up no matter what, you know?
Where, where does this go? From here, we're discussing this tonight, what's on your end, what, how, where are the discussion points still that?
We, we have it, we have consensus on our team. I mean, we had consensus last week. There are more like, what do we build? How do we build the infrastructure behind and the grading program? So, part of it, we need to know a four, three, two, one, zero, and then we need to say, okay, based on that decision, you know, changing the percentages, do we do some backend design around conversions so that a grade can actually be done as a percentage and added up? And I think as a team, we're probably not interested in doing that because it overinplace, it still overinplace the A level or the B level. So, we're looking at doing that to like 3.75, you know, the, the, creating a, a kind of an equal scale where you get your pluses and minuses.
So, who, who's on your team? Not by name, but what's the?
Uh, high school and middle school department chairs for mathematics, some middle school English teachers, some high school English teachers, a special ed teacher, and that's for the, that's for this policy committee. There's another policy that's got K-12 people that, because elementary already does standard based grading, so those are good for them, they already do it. And kids and parents are used to it. But for the, for the actual logistical end of the committee, there's a different snattering of elementary, middle.
So, on your committee, there's consensus now?
Yeah, they've had it since I brought the one for discussion last time is, or, you know, since I brought the sample last time, they've had consensus. And once we got to consensus was when we said, all right, we, we got to start rolling this out at the site. So, they've been taking it to, we've had a district-wide middle school meeting, we've had a, two district-wide middle school meetings to talk about it. One was the district, everybody used to introduce it. The second was site departments, I mean, department, district departments. And then there's been the third, the site level departments. And the high school has been rolling it out differently. I think they've been looking more at the philosophical approach to it, what, what is the purpose of grading? Why are we grading this way? And then talking about it more isolated in departments as meetings hold out.
What's the reasoning in page eight that I see lined out? It's the 2.0 grade point average required to participate in extracurricular activities? What's the reasoning in taking that out?
Because it's already addressed in board policy and it's in District 6145. And so, we just, whenever there's a chance to make sure we don't have something that might contradict itself later, we delete it. In the eligibility requirements, it says to be eligible to participate in extracurricular curriculum and co-curricular activities, students in grades seven to 12 must demonstrate status after your educational progress in previous grading period, including but not limited to maintenance of a 2.0 grade point average on a 4.0 scale. Again, everything in the world is 4.0 scales and maintenance of minimum progress towards meeting high school graduation. So, that's already asked and answered in the other policy.
Thank you.
Two minute.
Two minute quick.
We can move back to open session. Item 10A. Can I get a motion to approve personnel action report 1 floor, 1 time dash 10A? I think it's due.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve 10B ratification of personal action report 1415 dash 10B classified?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Item 10C. Can I get a, uh, an approval of declaration of need for fully qualified educators?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, business and operations services. Is there some comment? Item 12, board services. This will update the planning.
Item A, we, uh, we now have the governor's made budget proposal, his, his revision from January. The themes have been consistent. There really wasn't any change in direction, uh, just an update in the numbers. Governor Brown, I think over the last years has been remarkably consistent with what his, you know, overall budgetary philosophy has been on terms of forecasting revenue. He's, he's consistently been on the low end, um, prudently because in the past years we've been on the high end. Uh, and then, uh, using those prior year revenues from his underestimating for one-time purposes than in the next budget year, uh, which still meets the terms of Prop 98, but doesn't increase some of the inflated spending that unfortunately we've had in past years. Um, I think, you know, for those of you who've been at the table for a while, you even know California's economy has kind of been this moving bus at the taxation level. And we've had these great years then followed by the tough years. And, um, this governor's tried to smooth that out and I think he's very, been very consistent in that approach. So with his January proposal, uh, he put some one-time dollars on the table with his May revision. He upped the amount of one-time dollars that would be allocated out to school districts. Uh, we've heard that mentioned. It's, he's made it clear it could be for two purposes, either common core or, um, mandated cost reimbursement.
No, that's not correct.
Okay, I'm not correct.
But he is, he's really interested in paying down the wall of debt. So one-time money is coming to districts. It cannot be restricted in any way or he can't count it against mandated costs. But his message is districts can use it for a one-time purpose, including common core, including saving it for future instructional materials adoptions. But it is not designated for common core. It's really, that it was.
Okay, well, that was an accounting difference, not a.
That was essentially really important because he still gets to count it three ways.
That's what I'm saying. I was trying to say it my way.
You can use it for, you can use it for common core, you can use it to build reserves.
What she.
And then also count any of the same down the mandate backlog.
Which is what they're fighting.
Yes.
Um, there's also, uh, an increase in the local control funding formula gap percentage, uh, now projected at 53%. 53.08% for next year. That's good for our school district. We don't benefit as much on the supplemental and we don't get the concentration grant dollars at all. We've talked about that enough, I think at this point the board understands. And, um, what I'm really interested in is the school superintendent looking out at the next two, three, four years with districts where they can be sitting right next to each other and the demographics could be only slightly different and one district's going to get one, two, $3,000 more per student than the other. What are they really going to do to change student achievement? I mean, I genuinely want to know, not even rhetorically, it would be, okay, what program's going to get implemented and where and why or salaries or whatever it's going to be? Are we really going to see a difference? It's probably been about seven or eight years ago now, 2008-ish. I don't even know what the acronym, QIA, you might remember that.
How is the education.
You know, those are districts that kind of was in a small scale experiment just like this. They got a lot of extra dollars from a lawsuit that was brought against a prior governor who was underfunding Prop 98 and said, okay, we'll take that money and we'll allocate it to some really needy schools. And yet I would think that would serve as a model for what we're doing now, but I just, I haven't seen really anything coming out and like how successful those schools were. You know, so we look at parts of our school district, which might be demographically nearly identical to parts of Bellevue and yet Bellevue's going to have several thousand dollars more per student. Okay, well, what are they going to do differently? And what can they then share? What can we learn from that? I think that's one of the things that the governor and Mike Hurst is really his go-to advisor have been saying, okay, well, we want to see it. So I think we'll have a chance in the next few years. We have the school services material. I can send that out to the board as a PDF. Uh, they have their darkboard and their tape on the different parts of the budget. I think another thing that we've learned in the last few years with Governor Brown is there's not going to be many changes. What he outlines is his broad proposal in January is tightened up in May is adopted in June. In talking to different people, pretty well-connected in Sacramento, I mean, the trailer bills are already being written, they're already being, you know, revised, they're already, you know, and that's really where the details are and so there are just not going to be many changes. This is pretty much what we're going to see in 1516 is what we see now. So it's good news. It's good news. The one caveat I would put is we're still not where we were at the height of our funding. And that's another thing explaining to superintendents in different forms from different parts of the country. So it's great, we're getting more dollars, but we're still being asked to do more in 2015 than we had in funding, I'd say we may go past 0809.
If you don't inflation adjust.
Yeah. So, I mean, we like to say that for a while we're at 0708, you've kind of gone past 0809, but we're still five years, there's still a big debt. He's paying down the wall of debt, but not the debt owed to schools from underfunding of Prop 98.
Well, a lot of that debt's just been wiped off the books. Our debt is a factor from all those rough years. That's just gone, we're never getting that one back.
We used to have that chart, you know, that showed how much.
The outgainer.
They're not going to pay it, it's never going to be paid.
Well, the other thing, because I asked this morning, I went to the capital advisors workshop at the county office this morning, and we're still eight or nine years away from the local control funding formula being fully funded. So the goal, the target keeps moving by COLA every year. And even though we're getting more money towards the gap funding, originally it was considered, you know, predicted to be 2020, 21, now it's probably more like 22, 23 because the revenue has, some revenue has come in, but we're increasing the gap, but the target keeps moving too. So, um, and that's assuming, you know, recession between now and then, so.
Questions on the governor's budget? Item two, third interim report. Uh, we have a special board meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. Interesting, we start preparing the third interim report and, and nothing that you see in the May revise is really a part of the third interim report. So there are aspects of the third interim report that are really beyond, or not meaningful. But really what it is, is an exercise in preparing the district for audit and actuals and closing the books. And in that handed, in that regard, it's a good exercise to go through and really starting to look at different accounts and the funds, where there are dollars that are going to shake out to the good or to the bad, you know, so we know what our end fund balance would be when we go to budget adoption and we have a better idea of what our end fund balance will be at audit and actuals and so forth. So, and any district that's qualified or negative in any part of the year does a third interim report. Many districts in Think Math advises that all those districts do a third interim report, so many do regardless. And remind me, it's not an item the board votes on, it's an item they receive and we send to the county.
Right, till, but the board is informed before we send it to the county office.
Item three, so all that translating into budget planning for 2015, 16. Uh, we're starting to get a handle on our revenue projections, um, consistent with the governor's proposal. Our expenditure protection projections would be commensurate with that. One of the items that we've talked about this spring that we are building into our budget planning for 2015, 16 is the budget stabilization reserve. And I've really thought long and hard about that and some of the advice that we've been given by our county office and, and really a couple areas. One is projecting our enrollment and how that would translate to ADA, being very conservative there, it's better to be, to revise upward and downward. And secondly, the budget stabilization reserve is really something separate from, uh, our overall budget reserve. And, and I think it's, it's also kind of consistent with what the governor's done at the state level and saying, okay, you're going to have some good times and bad, you're going to have decisions fiscally that don't go your way in a given year. Maybe you think something is going to cost 100,000 and it turns out to be 200,000. So yes, there's a reserve for economic uncertainty and that's important, but then there's also some reserve that, that can cushion decisions that, that the district makes in any given year and projections that the district makes. So building that budget stabilization reserve in at some level. Item C, uh, which would be employee staffing and compensation. It's still, I think it's important to point out that there are still many staffing gaps in our school district, um, from the great recession that we're still recovering from. And as mentioned, we're still not out of, in terms of what's been cut from us in the past. Of course, the focus on it is on our students in classrooms and teachers, but a lot surrounds that to make that happen, whether it's a custodian or a counselor or a secretary or somebody filling out, um, important reports that need to be done. So the price of staffing changes that we also need to look at as we go into 1516 and with our increasing enrollment, making sure that, um, our support services are there to make sure what goes on in classrooms is, is really working. We've spent time this year providing information to the board, you know, about programmatic spending, whatever one would want to call it, how much is discretionary and how much is non-discretionary, if there are any thoughts the board has going into 1516 on that, we're wide open to look at that. When it comes right down to it, there's, there's not a whole lot of truly unrestricted discretionary spending. We talk about our general fund, people kind of think the general fund, that sounds like where the decision-making is and it's probably discretionary. Well, a huge chunk of the general fund is restricted, you know, we can only spend it in certain ways. Then you get into the unrestricted part of our general fund. Well, is it really discretionary? Can we not pay our PG&E bill? Can we not have phones? So you take all that out, now what's really left in the general fund unrestricted discretionary, it's, it's not a lot of dollars. And so how we use those dollars is very, very important and again focuses back on the classrooms and experiences our students have in classrooms. And then the last big factor that we look at, uh, is cash and cash balances. We continue to have a great relationship with San Antonio County Office of Education. Uh, we're not in a position, even with the overall wall of debt paid down at the state level and the ending of deferrals, uh, we still have cash crunches that we're going to hit throughout the course of the year. We'd like to get where we have a reserve level that we could manage that on our own. We currently have bond dollars that we can use for that, uh, but we aggressively want to spend those dollars and put them in facilities where it's benefiting the kids that are here now and into the future. So cash is something important to consider still, looking to the future.
And, and the federal deferrals have grown. So, uh, it's great that the state is ending their deferrals, although at least three different speakers this morning alluded to the fact that when the next state cash crisis or fiscal crisis hits, it worked so well before, that'll be one of their first.
Yeah, that's right.
But in addition, the feds have really changed the way they fund a lot of the programs under No Child Left Behind and in special education. And, uh, as an example, I am still waiting for about a quarter of our special ed funding for 2013, 14, and I've seen none for 14, 15.
On the federal revenue side, we often don't even know, not only do we not get the money, we often even don't even know really what the allocation is till the next year.
That's right, it keeps moving. So that's, uh, about a million and a half of cash that we don't have right now that we spent this year and last year, because the rule is if you don't spend it, you're never going to get it, you have to, they unallocated to you. So we've spent it, but we're waiting for it. And that's a good part of why we've had to borrow from the bottom of this money.
Any questions, comments on budget planning? Measure B? Not a lot of new information tonight. Looking to the future, looking to November of 15. I think part of our marketing, we'll need to communicate with the community on where those dollars has gone and the importance of those dollars. And back to the origin of measure D and the first committee meetings and people getting together, uh, the conversation started with replacing what the state had cut. I, I guess in my mind of thought and hope by 2015, 16, we would be not sitting here. I mean, it, again, it's, it's, I don't, the, the news is great coming from the state, but it's great in the context of how much we were cut and how deep those cuts were. And what I would love to see, um, you know, I, I truly believe to maintain the direction that we're going as a school district, we need to renew measure D and have those funds available. And I'd like to see somewhere before eight or nine years, us truly get back not only to where we should be, but the growth of where we should be. And then measure D can really convert to being that enrichment level and bringing the extra special stuff for our students in classrooms. Right now, it's still helping us fill the base. I mean, the overwhelming majority is going to elementary teacher salaries and, and that's, that's where we're at and we're going to need it. I don't think we have anything new on consultant vendor agreements?
No, I'm just starting to update it for what we're planning to do next, this year.
On enrollment, I didn't have any chance to do extensive analysis, but I did, was able to do some analysis and, you know, take a look at our numbers and where there's some anomalies and, um, we've got enrollment projections, we have some of our elementary principals here, those are the K enrollment numbers are tracking very well compared to where we were at, in fact, kind of high enough to like, okay, this is good.
Yes, expected though, because it was the first cohort five years ago, so.
If you look at, at the April 30, 2015 in your packet, you work backwards, you can kind of see where we've been kindergarten-wise. So our current fifth grade students, and these are, you know, this is a quick and dirty analysis, not truly going back and looking at what happened to that cohort, because as I've said, in any given year, we have a lot of transits and these are things that have come and gone, but, so our current fifth grade, if I'm doing my math correctly, would have enrolled in kindergarten in the fall of '09. If any elementary principal just wants to shake their head like, yeah, you got that right, Rob. I'm doing the math, it's common core. And then, so if you look at fourth grade, and that's our smallest number on the board there, that would have been the fall of 2010. At only 409. Um, and then you see 421 would have been 11, 438, 12, 434, 13, 462, 14. So overall, the trend is going in the right direction, um, getting us back to where we were. I don't know if that 2009 year, I'd have to go back and pull other data to see what was going on in kindergarten '08, kindergarten '07, but, um, so I, I don't know. And it gets by the time you get up into six, you know, the six, eight, nine, 12, so the trend there is good. Another way you look at it is, okay, so we brought in 462 kindergarteners, right now it looks like we'll bring in that number or more. And if you look at that, all the way down to high school, our 12th grader graduating class, that's small, 390 this year. So one of the series, you know, one of the signs of health you look at for a district enrollment-wise, and I think Justin Brown mentioned it maybe last meeting, we made a point, you're going to exit a certain amount, it's at one end of the spectrum, how many are you bringing in on the other? So if we're bringing in 460, that's good, because even if you look across the board, you'd have to go to our freshman class, our current freshman of 465 to approach that number. So at least gets us stable for the next few years if those numbers hold and growing. And then as we've said, you know, all the housing, going to generate some amount of students. How many, we don't know. So that's kind of one, another way I looked at it. I pulled last April's enrollment, so I could kind of go back and forth and see, all right, well, what's, where were we at in April, you know, spring of 14 as compared to where we're at now? What's some, some interesting things that I can look at? So one of the things that jumped out at me, so if I look at, at fifth grade in April of 14, 396, that became 408 sixth graders this year. If I look at last year's sixth grade, sixth grade, so this year's seventh grade, uh, that was 447, so that went up to 460. If I look at last year's seventh grade compared to this year's eighth grade, that went from 456 to 453. So those are good signs, not huge signs, but good. Another thing I looked at was, uh, our, our overall, well, another one I looked at that went the other direction, and we've talked about this a little bit, was if you looked at last year's juniors, 418, that only translates to 390 seniors. So there's been some attrition there. And, you know, these are enrollment, these translated to ADA, and those are not necessarily students that were generating ADA, those are students that we were enrolling as seniors and maybe name only. And a lot of those students have benefited from, you know, new opportunities, whether through the Gateway to College program or California Conservation Corps, getting their GED, but they're out of our system. So that's, that's down to, and that's not necessarily unusual, that you can see fewer seniors and juniors. Last year's overall K5 enrollment in April was 25 eighty, and this year is 26 thirty-two. Last year's overall six, eight enrollment was 13 oh three, we're now at 13 thirty-one.
Rob, last year's, I'm looking at last year's two, and we had 261 in sixth grade. Where are the rest of the sixth graders? Because then it shows this year, 408, shows seventh grade last year, 505, dropping to 460 this year, and eighth grade, 537 last year, which would have gone, 537 would have gone to high school.
What are you looking at?
Oh, you got, so I'm looking at.
April of 2014.
April of 2014.
I have in sixth grade, 447 last year.
You know, than this one. I mean, I got the same number, the 57, 66 for the total.
I'm looking at Lawrence Jones, 211, Tech Middle, 186, Thomas Page, 50.
And they've dropped the number on sixth graders for, for Tech Middle on this one. Where'd you go?
211 in sixth grade, Tech Middle, nothing listed. Because we start sixth grade last year, not.
I have to see, I don't, that's.
Thomas Page, 50, so we're missing a Tech Middle.
There's no.
Right, we're talking sixth grade.
No, we're talking sixth grade, it's just not in there, it's not in the field. It's only 200.
I'd have to look at what you put it out.
So I, it's 408 last year, I keep, keep them in here. I, yeah, so I don't know, so this.
I know we had sixth graders here, so.
I know, I don't, I know it wasn't zero, but the totals match, the 57 and 66.
And the 13 oh three matches what you just said, it's just there's nothing in the.
Right.
All right, well, there.
Yeah, those kinds of things.
The high school was 1713, this year is 1729. And then there's an issue, uh, and we always have this challenge of trying the best we can to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges and how to treat, where we count the special ed kids, and I'm still not sure I've got my head completely wrapped around that. And we've gone through this program transfer and, uh, students that were previously in county classes are now in our classes and.
These are day classes are now, they've been certain learning centers today if you're on agenda.
Yeah, so I, that's an area we're going to have to look at, you know, we're tracking the kids.
With our new director.
Well, it's really, it's just making sure we're having good comparisons, you know? If we're looking at our enrollment, we want to have good comparisons, we're comparing ourselves to a year ago, and we know we were counting far more students a year ago in certain types of special ed classes and this year we're not, or are we counting those kids correctly and how do we make those comparisons? That's, that is something I, that I, I think we're struggling with and so I just want to continue to work on that.
I think it'll get better if our new student information system.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that imports, yeah, yeah, we're looking forward to accurate special ed information and, and, I know we have 755 kids.
I mean, overall, as, as, you know, pointed out in the state of the district, I mean, the last month of the month before, the trend is in the right direction. We can look at what we want to compare against. The demographic study done in 1011 has us at 5200 students this year. I can't even contemplate what our school district would look like with 5200 students from a organizational, cultural and fiscal point of view. Can't contemplate. Enrollment remains a goal, will remain a goal for the foreseeable future.
Can we go for E? So E, board services?
We've had informal discussions regarding Richard Crane Elementary School vis a vis the future of the district enrollment-wise, looking at the university specific plan area, which we drive down the expressway, at this point it's full speed ahead. We hear slightly different timelines, um, as to when houses are going to be completed, whether there'll be anybody, you know, any completed by the end of 2015. Certainly the latest we've heard is spring of 2016. I quite frankly think they can speed up or slow down based on what they think the market's going to support, if they think that there are enough buyers out there for the fall of 2015, they'll put extra workers on the job and get some houses ready to sell in the fall of 2015.
Well, they do need the sewer project done, that, that is important.
They can work seamlessly on the sewer, they're digging trenches and laying pipe.
They'll have a house that's sewn or.
You can see that's happening.
So, you know, looking at, at that area, looking at our elementary capacity, our middle school capacity, our high school capacity, and just some discussions that we've had. There's the other project which we hear, again, they can crank up and go as fast as they want. We still haven't seen a lot of movement over there, which would be in the mountain house. Project Fiori Estates?
No.
Okay.
Fiori Estates is the one by Costco.
All right, so that's right. Yes, I know that.
Those are.
I'm, I'm, I'm property, I blocked it out of my mind, so that, that's in play. So, you know, the developers were looking at the district the way it was 10, you know, 11 years ago and what our capacity was. eleven years ago, and what our capacity was then. So unfortunately, what we're, we're, we were able to, well, not us directly, the city of Runner Park, because these are projects within the city boundaries of Runner Park and subject to the Runner Park general plan, the negotiations, you know, weren't necessarily favorable for a lot of school money, because the capacity was there. Since the school closures, we've reopened, uh, University Elementary at La Viesta, slowly filling that school up, but they don't have limited capacity. For fifteen, sixteen, I believe we will have two more classrooms at least available to us in the B wing, if you remember from tours that we've done there. And the B wing was never really modified too much, so if, what the county programs have in there, if it moves out, we can move classrooms in, or library, or whatever we want. The A wing is, is very different. In sixteen seventeen, we'll get the K, or sooner perhaps, based on what's going on itself, uh, we'll get the K, you would like sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Get the K, K classrooms back. So we'll have more capacity. At some point, we'll discuss and negotiate with the county what to do about the A wing, they may wanna keep it, it may be worth our while to not go in there and redo all the walls and keep them there, we'll see. So then, the other area that we have capacity is that, is Richard Crane. And lots of discussions, school site level, parental level, uh, we have the two tracks at Evergreen Elementary, the traditional track and the year-round track. Thank you very much, Principal Risaci, for really putting that in place and, and getting it off the ground, it's matured, we're into our third, third year, um, and, and we see that as a strong viable program for the future, but it makes it a challenge to have, because essentially, we've created the same situation we had at John Reed in Waller Runner, with the small school environment, um, and, and coexisting side by side, and if you're on one of those tracks, um, the balancing of classes between the two presents challenges in allocating resources. So, as you see presented here for discussion and, and planning, and really some direction, this is, this is the direction we're going, unless, unless we would, you know, hear differently from the board, which is to, uh, when we reopen Richard Crane, and, and when it becomes back available to the school district in sixteen seventeen, we'll need some period of time to do some rehabilitation work. So, year-round program, students would go off-track in the fall at whatever calendar date it is in twenty sixteen, and when they come back on track, they would, um, be at the Richard Crane campus. And so, that would give capacity at the elementary level at Richard Crane, it would give capacity at the elementary level at Evergreen, both of which would be the two closest schools to the university district. Some decisions that would have to be made, well, there are a lot of decisions that would have to be made, but one of them, but we're looking at it and don't have a staff recommendation at this point, would be whether we wanna zone Richard Crane, or just leave it as open enrollment district-wide, um, for year-round. Kinda having the same discussion for University Elementary, do we wanna have a zone for that? And if so, what would make sense, or to leave it as a small project-based school that you can apply to as, as part of our open enrollment. We believe with those two schools, um, we would have the capacity for quite some time to absorb the, an elementary enrollment from the university area. How many, you know, it's really hard to project, I've seen lots of different numbers, Brookfield's numbers were five hundred, which might be a reasonable number, might not, but that's one that's fully built out, that doesn't count.
When we start seeing houses get built, we'll know what kind of yields we're seeing, and that will be the most current information anyone would have on, how many kids are we really gonna get out of a given number of houses, so...
And, and we will not, and the, the dollars available from developer fees will, although big, and we're talking millions, are not the kind of dollars that could build a school. You know, as we know from our facility committee, you know, discussions, for an elementary school, you know, given that we have the land, or a district has the land, you know, thirty million dollars, certainly, uh, if we look at the modular thirteen classrooms that we're doing at Thomas Page, we'll have a pretty good idea, if we were putting a school together with that basic modular construction after this summer, we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea, okay, if we extrapolated that to a school, what would that cost? And it's gonna be twenty to thirty million, at least. And whereas, for the entire university-specific plan, we may get, and I'd like to be optimistic, maybe ten billion in developer fees.
I'm, I'm trying to...
Are you being really optimistic?
I'm saying six to eight before, but that didn't necessarily count, city makers.
The miracle would be, is if, because the state doesn't have any facilities money, if we were allowed to double the fees, that, that's...
I, that's some of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe by then, we'll have a bond on for construction.
So with that, any, you know, thoughts, direction, questions from the board?
Would, would the, um, the year-round program grow at Crane, isn't it right now, um, is it one class per grade level?
It's two, uh, until fourth, right, this year is third, fourth, and fifth are one. Next year, fourth and fifth will be one.
What's the percentage of space taken by the year-round versus the traditional at Evergreen right now? What's the percentages?
Let's say forty. Forty percent year-round, sixty traditional.
But it triggers combination classes, that's a challenge with it, or is it...
One of the things that, uh, we have some new mapping software that we're just implementing, I had a chance to demonstrate it for Trustee Wiltermood, um, and when we were doing the initial implementation, one of the things that we realized we needed to build in, and I don't know that we have yet, is the ability to map and see where all the different year-round students come from. It's actually pretty impressive to graphically see where all the students are, it's one thing to see a list, you know, printed out on spreadsheets, another thing to graphically see where students are. Well, Evergreen in general, if you look at, at these maps of, of, you can look at, okay, well, here's the school, and here's where all the students come from that go to that school, and here's its attendance zone. Evergreen tends to be one of those schools that has students spread out, we assume many of those are year-round kids, um, but there's students spread out from all around the district. Compared to some other schools where there's more stickiness to its actual attendance area, I was pointing out, Hawn, if you look at Hawn, it's much more tightly clustered, and you can kinda look at it for a variety of reasons, it's a, Teresa, I'm here anymore, you know, it's a good school, good, good programs, tradition, it's also in a section of the district that, you know, you'd have to travel far if you wanted to go somewhere else. So it doesn't have as much of a diversity that Evergreen has, a chunk of diversity and drawing students from all over the district.
Yeah, I, I would like to see the, the year-round grow, I think, you know, we have an opportunity to, to do that. I mean, that was one of, um, the discussion points when we brought it in, was, you know, was Evergreen gonna eventually go year-round completely, and we've sort of been in a holding pattern, I think. And if we have the population that will support it, I think that would be a good thing to, to promote.
Especially if they still have the choice of either going to Evergreen or going to Richard Crane.
We're going to Dunham, we're going to...
No, we don't wanna go to Dunham.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's been the excuse in the past, when they're claiming, when we don't have the space, or when we didn't have the program, Ken Grove was an easy alternative, and we're making that alternative harder, because our class sizes are smaller, and we have a program.
Well, that's a fact. Good. It's in the middle, it's more in the middle of the district, so you have, the kids have more of an opportunity to be able to walk, because it's closer.
But I think that's the, the argument why you don't wanna have a business zone, you wanna keep all of those programs open, because that's one of the things that we talked about, is providing choice for the parents, and so if it is open enrollment through the whole district, I think it'll be both, both sides more attractive.
Yeah, I, I believe, and we've embodied it, the word choice, as much as we possibly can, and we want our students, our families, our teachers to be in the program they wanna be in, the school they wanna be in, the track they wanna be in, you know, people, I, I think, just as a general philosophy, do better when they're where they want to be. So, we'll keep going in this direction, and, um, I, and I think what we wanna do is be able to empower the principal, to have more meetings, really start to translate this into plans, and, and bring some action items back to the board in the future day. Given that we have set aside really the bulk of next Tuesday's special meeting for facilities, I, I can briefly touch on it, really, the process that we're in right now is, is developing the contracts that we'll really actually implement, quite a bit of construction, millions of dollars' worth of construction, so...
The one thing, I mean, we, and, you know, we should, we should talk more about it next week, the one thing I just wanted to mention today, I've had some discussions with community members, and, and what, I think, we probably, we might've missed an opportunity at Thomas Page that maybe we won't miss again. The community, and especially parents, um, but also business owners, they wanna see like a, a, a groundbreaking deal, like, like, like to show that the money is being spent, and it's being spent on, you know, with a picture of the plan, and, and what it's gonna look like, and I, I think that, from a marketing standpoint, it's sort of a neat thing, if you, you know, got out there on a, what, I mean, I know it was on a Saturday for Thomas Page a little, you know, but, I mean, it only has to be twenty minutes, you get a few people out there, and, and if you have a gold shovel, and the president, you know, off you go, you know, so...
Yeah, I'm superintendent, secretary McKeon. I think we were all just so full-speed at it.
Oh, I know, I know.
On Thomas Page, it was like, are we gonna get this done?
Well, you know, and I hadn't even thought about it. But, I mean, there are some people that approached me and said, why didn't you have a groundbreaking?
We'll look at it for a date in June, if we can, um, where we can get people together for that at Ranch Pataki High School, even though maybe some of the work will have started, because really, the foundational work, if you look at Ranch Pataki, you've got the exterior modernization, the landscaping, hardscaping, Snyder Avenue, and the big new tack building. So, all of it will be in various states of implementation in June. But if we could find a date in June and spread a ribbon out, maybe, yeah, and, and where the kind of tag building will be, yeah, that's...
Maybe get an ad somewhere, you know, have, have a ribbon, it'd be really cool.
Yes, the big, the big scissors, we have the, we didn't hear it.
And the big shovel.
Or the shovel.
Shovel, picture with the shovel, yes, we can, gotta get the money picture with the shovels. All right, so superintendent, superintendent McKeon, superintendent McKeon, well, we'll look for a date and send out an email on that. So what we anticipate you will see next week will be addendums to the Thomas Page Academy lease lease back, that will include increment two work, which would be the, both exterior and interior modernization. Hopefully included in increment two will be the final hardscaping and landscaping, it's possible that that will have to be changed ordered in, change ordered in, we, that's an area we've been doing a lot of value engineering, which is a really fancy term for meaning trying to save money, um, and looking at suitable products that we can put on the campus that meets the safety needs, and meets, you know, the needs of comfort, and aesthetics, and everything else. So, the basic process that we are going through, um, with architect and with Wright Contracting is, once we start to finalize plans, Wright Contracting is bidding all of this out, so most of the work is bid below what their levels doing, as the large general are doing some of the work, but, so we're aggressively bidding out sections of this, and if we, we'd rather have aggressive bids than speed up getting the final GMP number, so. Also included with the Thomas Page lease, lease back, um, will be the, the, the Kinder Zone at Thomas Page, and rather than create an entire new and large, you know, two-hundred-page lease, lease back and site lease, we, we'll probably attach the Evergreen Kinder Zone to that, along with the Evergreen shade, so you'll see that. We may not have the final numbers on the shade at Evergreen. Then, at Ranch Pataki High School, oh, and one last, um, addendum to the Thomas Page, there's three portables at Thomas Page that are being moved, uh, one of them is being moved to Hawn, and the cost of that move will be included in the Thomas Page, um, document, and two are being moved to Ranch of Pataki, and the cost of the, the two going in Ranch of Pataki will be included in what you see there as item B, so that's where we will have the, the large two-hundred-page document, which is essentially going to be very similar to Thomas Page, because it'll contemplate an increment one for the work this summer, uh, that's the exterior modernization from the ground up, fairly ready to have a GMP on that. Hopefully, but it may not be ready for next Tuesday, we'll have increment two, which would be all the hardscaping and landscaping, and then increment three, which would be the largest of all, which would be the theater academic gymnasium building, the tack building. And then, uh, we have the rehabilitation of the K wing going on here, that'll be its own standalone, separate contract, and, um, playground replacement, which is going on. So the playground replacement will be in different contracts, in, in all the kindergarten playground placement, the placements at Thomas Page will be a part of Thomas Page contract. The Kinder Zone at Evergreen will be a part of that, Thomas Page is an addendum and attachment to it. The rest of the playgrounds, district-wide, will be on separate standalone contracts, because that has been done completely by the district, working with the contractor, doesn't involve the architect. The equipment is all off the state bid list, and then, we will work with Wright Contracting to install the playgrounds and the base that goes around the playgrounds. I think I've covered, and then, yeah, that, that's, that's, those are the contracts that we're looking at right now.
Just a couple.
Home in the ninety days of May.
Yeah, it's a busy time.
I will be wishing for ninety days in July and August, I'm pretty sure.
We, we, we have an ambitious amount of work that's gonna take place this summer. You know, I, I'm always optimistic, I'm confident in our team, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll get it all done. If a few things slip, we're already looking at some things that we're anticipating might slip, for instance, the shade at Evergreen, and, okay, well, we'll just have to, you know, work on, work around, you know, to make sure we can get that done and not too negatively impact the site. I would also point out, because there was a slight point of confusion, but I'll make sure we clear it up, the, the theater academic gymnasium building at Rancho, when, when you see it on the project list, it says fall of twenty seventeen, that doesn't mean fall semester, that means the fall. So hopefully, I'll circle back with principal at the high school, and I think everybody there understands that, and it was never contemplated that that would be ready for the beginning of school year twenty sixteen, seventeen. And, and based upon the addition of more classroom space, of, you know, larger, more functional theater, the second floor, we're gonna push hard to get it in the fall, the fall might be in December, but it'll be, you know, we're still confident it's gonna be somewhere around that midpoint of that school year, but it's not gonna be done in
I'm twelve C, I get a motion to adopt updated AB eight-six common course day standards expenditure plan.
So moved?
Can I get a second? All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm twelve D, acceptance of gifts and donations to schools and school districts. We received at University Elementary, deep equipment from Harlem Westman Check Center for two hundred and fifty dollars. From Marguerite Hawn, um, two monetary donations, um, one from Wells Fargo Community Support for twenty-eight dollars, one from Wells Fargo Matching Gift Program for fifty dollars, for a total of three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Can I get a motion to accept the gifts and donations to the school district?
And will we accept the gifts and donations to the schools and district?
Can I get a...
Second, Beth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If she carries. Any items you guys would like to have on the future agenda?
Trustee Gilardi has a request, and I'll work with our food services director to have her come and talk about the chef competition. I don't know if she'll be able to bring the little chef later, but we'll do the best we can.
I have a request, I'd still like to have PTAs come?
Yes, we're working on it.
Thank you. PTAs are good.